Alrighty folks, we're gonna get ready here. No problem. Alright, it is 2:04 PM on this Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, and I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Clerk Woodley, would you please do the roll call?
Thank you, Madam President. Trustee Hull. Vice President Mayberry. Trustee Dr. Nicolet.
Good afternoon.
Trustee Phoenix, present. President Smith. Trustee Westlake. Clerk Woodley here. Trustee Annie Batavia. All present accounted for.
Thank you. Alright, we have a room full of fantastic women with us here, and the female leader in our community that I would like to invite to lead us in the pledge is Hyla Friedenhall, the Executive Director of the Nevada Women's Fund.
Against to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And now we will move on to item 104, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu/Washoe, Nukmu/Northern Paiute, Niwi/Western Shoshone, and Nuhwu/Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. Thank you. That closes item 1.04, and we will move on now to section 2 that closes section 1 in its entirety. And we now go into our consent agenda items. Today, we are looking at items 2.02 through 2.23. I have not been noticed beforehand about anyone pulling an item off of the consent agenda. Seeing no lights on, I don't see any indication to do that. Now would be the time if anybody has any comments on any of the individual items. No? Okay. J.J., do we have any public comment for items 2.02 to 2.23?
Navadurran for item 2.21.
Thank you so much, Mr. Navadurran. Thank you for being here.
Hello, guys. My name is Paul Navadurran. I went to attend meeting tonight, last night, at Yessedah High Middle School. So my biggest concern, you know, concern, you know, the master plan of PK2A school, and I went to last zoning meeting, and we showed the enrollment, it's so low, you know, we cannot, you know, at VON, whoever, anytime crews, you know, any popular option, VON will be declining 60% for the next 10 years, no matter what. So, and you look at consideration of Worcester High School, High School, and I'm kind of PK2A schools, so I don't think, I don't think it's not gonna happen for PK2A school anytime soon because of enrollment protected declining. And also for Worcester, if Worcester were rebuilt, Spark High School will likely to be close as well, could, or could be merged with Worcester as well. So think about consideration of enrollment and school enrollment and the protected enrollment, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navadurran.
That's all I have.
Alright, so I'll bring it back to this board. I'm looking for a motion to approve items 2.02 to 2.23.
Madam President, go ahead and move to approve item 2.02 through 2.23.
And I'll second that.
Very good. We have a motion by Vice President Mayberry, a second by Trustee Phoenix. Looking around and seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Alright, motion carries. Thank you so much, colleagues. That closes our consent item and closes section 2 in its entirety. And we move on now to section 3, our items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. And we will start with the opening of item 3.01. Truly something joyous. The presentation of a Washoe County School District proclamation honoring National Women's History Month in the Washoe County School District. This is an item for presentation and discussion only, and boy, do we have a blockbuster group of incredible female leaders in this room. And now we will welcome one of those, Dr. Katie Louise Weir, our Director of Professional Growth Systems. Welcome, Dr. Weir.
Good. Okay. Good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the Board of Trustees. As mentioned, I'm Dr. Katie Louise Weir, former teacher and principal here in Washoe County School District and current Director of Professional Growth Systems. I have over 13 years of service here in Washoe County School District, 20 years total in education, and it's my pleasure to join in honoring the women of WCSD and their legacy of dedication and leadership. As we celebrate International Women's Day and International Women's Month, we recognize the remarkable women who are the backbone of the Washoe County School District. Women make up 76% of our workforce, shaping the future of education with their dedication, expertise, and leadership. In the classroom, 79% of certified staff and 78% of teachers are women, fostering student success every day. In leadership, 64% of principals and 64% of central office administrators are women, guiding our schools with vision and excellence. Women in WCSD have a legacy of service. 1,873 women have served Washoe County School District for more than 10 years. 92 have dedicated more than 30 years of service to education here in WCSD. This year alone, 200 certified and nearly 500 education support professional women are stepping into educational careers with Washoe County School District for the first time, continuing this tradition of commitment. In addition, we have strong women in leadership representation within our Board of Trustees, both past and present, including President Smith, Trustee Dr. Nicolet, Trustee Westlake, Trustee Hull, and our student representative, Annie Batavia. From our classrooms to our leadership teams, the impact of women in Washoe County School District is undeniable. Today, we celebrate their passion, perseverance, and the vital role they play in shaping our schools and communities. We even have WCSD leadership which extends to state service in our Nevada Legislature, including former Board of Trustees President, Dr. Angie T., State Senate, and Assembly Members Natha Anderson and Selena LaRue Hatch, who are currently teachers within Washoe County School District. At this time, I would like to honor our overall longest-serving employees as well as our longest-serving employees within many of our employee groups. Our overall longest-serving employee will go first, and then I'll list out the specific employees after. Esteemed guests, when I call your name, if you could stand up and give us a wave, following the reading of the proclamation, we'll come up and do a presentation of gifts. Sure. Alright, moment you've all been waiting for. So our overall years of service employee representative is Colleen Winter, who is currently the principal at Maxwell Elementary School, and she has served Washoe County School District for over 39 years. Close behind her, with just a few months less of service, is our longest-standing teacher, Ms. Alice Caskey, from Lena Juniper Elementary School, also 39 years. Alice was so cute, she emailed and said, "I think I can get coverage, so I can come." I said, "I think you can." Our longest-serving principal here in Washoe County School District, retiring this year, is Principal Chrissy Brown of Mount Rose Elementary School, 25 years. Here today to celebrate, oh. Here today to celebrate with her is her Assistant Principal, Ms. Lani Exander. Alright, in pro tech, we have almost an exact hire date tie, which is really fun. These are professional technical administrators. Our first is Lauren Olin and Grants with 24 years of service. Lauren, there she is. Here today to celebrate with Lauren is the Grants Department, her husband Hank, and her son Blake. Also in our pro tech, we have Lisa Guzman from the Intervention Department, 24 years of service. Lisa has members of the Intervention Team here, including Director Rochelle Maria. Our longest-serving ESP employee, Education Support Professional, is our Swoop Nutrition Services Manager with over 38 years of service, April DeGoyer. Rockin' her Swoop Spirit wear here, too. And last but not least, here from the employee side, from school police for 18 years of service, we have Cassie Alred. Celebrating here with Cassie, she has her daughter Devon and her lifelong friend, Missy Cook Sanford, our Assistant Principal at Dilworth Middle School. Alright, honorees, you may be seated. We're gonna call you back up here in a minute. In addition to the incredible women within Washoe County School District's community, we would like to take the opportunity to recognize one of our community partners, Nevada Women's Fund. Nevada Women's Fund is a dedicated nonprofit organization committed to empowering women and strengthening communities across Nevada. Since their founding in 1982, Nevada Women's Fund has worked to identify and fund critical initiatives that support women's education, career development, and personal growth. Through scholarships, grants, and collaborative programs, Nevada Women's Fund aims to break down barriers and create opportunities that foster efficiency and achievement. The mission is driven by a vision of a Nevada where women can thrive, lead, and make contributions to their families, workplaces, and the community. Nevada Women's Fund has awarded close to $6 million in scholarships, over $4 million in grants, and honored over 2,000 female leaders during the annual Women of Achievement Luncheon. Dozens of highly talented Washoe County School District leaders, including myself, have been honored at this incredible annual event. In addition, our retired Superintendent, Dr. Krista McNeil, serves on the Board of Directors for Nevada Women. If you're interested in learning more about this amazing organization, please visit their website at nevadawomensfund.org. Here today to receive the recognition is Ayla Friedenhall, President and CEO of Nevada Women's Fund. Also joining Ayla is the Nevada Women's Fund Director of Marketing, Morgan Gaudier. And now I will turn it back over to the Board of Trustees for the reading of the proclamation.
Thank you. This is an incredible honor. And I am so glad to be here to celebrate all the women in this room. Being a female leader of this board, I absolutely believe that the celebration of all of you is so very important. But as we focus on women in leadership, I do think it's important to all know how we use language around female leadership and just some of the things that we're hearing so that we understand and create space for female leaders in our organizations and in our lives, particularly around when a female leader or someone in the workplace is, is being assertive or is telling their truth, that we also lift that up. Earlier today, we were at the Student Voice Conference, and we were talking with students about using our voice. And I think that it's so important as women and people who support women that we also think about those things in our organizations and in our lives. So thank you all for how you've contributed to the district, and we are so much better for that. And so on that note, now we will go ahead, I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas Women's History Month is a time to recognize and honor the invaluable contributions of women throughout history, across all fields of endeavor, in our nation and around the world. And whereas this year's theme, Moving Forward Together, Women Educating and Inspiring Generations, reflects the profound influence of women as educators, mentors, and leaders who shape the future through their knowledge, guidance, and example. And whereas the resilience, strength, and leadership of women have shaped societies, broken barriers, and paved the way for greater opportunities for future generations. And whereas women bring unique perspectives, collaboration, innovation, and mentorship to every organization they serve, strengthening workplaces, schools, and communities through their leadership and dedication. And whereas the achievements of women in education, science, business, public service, the arts, activism, and countless other fields continue to inspire and drive progress in our communities and beyond. And whereas women in the Washoe County School District have built a legacy of dedication with 1,873 women serving for over 10 years, 777 for more than 20 years, and 92 for over 30 years, alongside 200 women beginning their journey in education this year, reinforcing the lasting impact of women in shaping the future. Now therefore, on behalf of Joe Ernst, Superintendent of the Washoe County School District, I, Elizabeth Smith, do proclaim March 2025 as Women's History Month. Let us honor the contributions of women by learning from their stories, celebrating their achievements, and recognizing the invaluable leadership, perspective, and dedication they bring to education and beyond. Let this month serve as a time of reflection, education, and celebration as we analyze the past, present, and future contributions of women and their enduring impact on our schools and communities. Thank you. And now we're gonna take a big photo. Alright, everyone. Alright, everyone, we'll go ahead. Thank you, JJ. Thank you. Alright, everyone, that closes item 3.01, and we'll move on now to item 3.02. This is the discussion and possible action pursuant to Board Policy 9071BI2 for the Board of Trustees to approve amending Board Policy 9055. This is item for possible action, and I'm gonna take the starting position on this one. This is brought forward by Vice President Mayberry and myself. So JJ, if you could scroll down to the section 1, and then it's 1B. There we go. Okay. So, something that is very important for the board, it's one of the things that we're responsible for. So the board has several areas of responsibility, the budget, the hiring and direction of the superintendent, and also board policy. And board policy is something that we are all individually responsible for, but we only pass together as a group. So in this case, the reason why I asked JJ to please bring this up is because this is not the board policy that we're looking, that we are recommending that we discuss and amend, but rather I just wanted to take a moment and explain to the public and to our own board the circumstances under which we actually do amend board policies. So there's a few different ways that a policy can come to us, either to be created, to be deleted, or to be amended. One of those ways is when the superintendent or the responsible office believes that a policy is out of date, or it is creating confusion as opposed to clarity. And then we can also do that when trustees see something. So when trustees, and this is our role, say, "I think that this policy needs to be discussed." This is something that our entire board has to actually discuss, and we actually have to vote on it before we talk about it. And so now, JJ, would it be possible to please bring up Board Policy 9055 to the one that we are talking about here? So this item team is not to discuss this item. This vote right here is purely to say that a majority of trustees, should we so move, would like to discuss this policy. Now, in particular, the policy that we're looking at here is 5G, if we could scroll down. So, a vote for this, and we will of course do public comment if there is any, is exclusively to open up a conversation around the policy that you see here, the section Legislative Representative. It is not for the entirety of 9055, it is just for this one section. And so my experience in talking with multiple different trustees over a period of time is that this policy here is not particularly clear. It does have some outdated language in it. It is Vice President Mayberry and I bringing you to the board, to all of our colleagues, to ask that we vote on this in order to actively discuss it. So in this item, we don't need to debate or discuss our different interpretations of it. It is only a vote to say that we will have a conversation. This is a little bit different than the way that we've often done policies, but I wanted to explain the process so that everyone understands, so it is a little bit different. I'm seeing no lights on. JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no cards for this item.
Very good. So also seeing no lights on, if we could have discussion, or we could go straight to a motion so that we can have the conversation?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion. I move that the Board of Trustees approve amending Board Policy 9055.
I second.
Very good. Alright, seeing no lights on. All those in favor of the motion made by Clerk Woodley and seconded by Trustee Westlake?
I will admit to being confused. I thought the motion would have been to move to discuss, not already moved to 3.02? I'm confused. Help me, help me.
Sure. So the motion here is to agree that a majority of the trustees would like to discuss it, possibly amend, delete, but we can't do any substantive work unless the majority of us agree that we would like to discuss it, and wherever that could go from there.
Okay, so then I maybe didn't hear the motion again. I really apologize. Could you repeat the motion, please? So sorry.
The motion is that the Board of Trustees approves amending Board Policy 9055.
Thank you.
That's what we have written here.
If I may, Madam President, thank you for that. I'd like to amend my motion, please. I move that the Board of Trustees discuss and possibly amend Board Policy 9055.
Alright, does our second agree? Alright, so we have a friendly, we have an amendment to the motion by Clerk Woodley. We have an agreement on the second, which is trustee, it's actually trustee Westlake. Okay, very good. Thank you so much for calling that out. This is exactly why we do this. Alright, thank you all so much, colleagues. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Alright, motion carries. Thank you so much. That closes item 3.02 and brings us now to item 3.03. That is the presentation and possible action to provide preliminary approval to amend Board Policy 9055-5G related to the Legislative Representative and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period. This is an item for possible action. So while I took the first part of this, I am now going to defer to our Board Vice President, Adam Mayberry, to talk about some initial thoughts here and to open up the dialogue.
Okay, thank you, Madam President, and thank you, colleagues, for allowing us to move this forward and having a conversation on amending Policy 9055-G. G as in golf. And this does is two things. And I want to just preface some of my comments by saying, I'm gonna try to be succinct, and I want to memorialize what the intent is that we're attempting to do. And I think you'll find this is consistent with our board policy of, or board governance, rather, and informed oversight. So this, by clarifying and amending our proposal, does two things. So, this, by clarifying and amending our proposal, does two things. Clarifies the Board's Legislative Representatives and their duties. Secondly, it provides a process for this body to have a voice on select legislation, to ask questions, possibly take action on a particular position. I have some notes here because I want to be succinct. I don't want to forget anything. We've attempted to put some guardrails in place on this policy that is not in the current policy, and you'll see the language proposed. And I'll read from that quote that the Board Legislative Representatives should act in coordination with the Superintendent and District Legislative Affairs Team, as noted. And maybe the should should say must, you know, it's something we can talk about. It's not the desire to have this Board Legislative Liaison in the Legislative Building daily, you know, hopping from hearing to hearing, providing testimony. That's not what we're attempting to do here at all. That's the duty of our staff. You know, I think from President Smith's perspective in mind is that there may be a time when it's appropriate, and it should be rare, that this person, this Legislative Liaison on the Board should help, but bring forward some identifying legislation on those important items that we can perhaps, and should have a background, because there really isn't a vehicle for that. So, let me provide some, a little bit more background. And again, I want to be very clear. It's not our intent to bring every legislation to this body for review, not even half, not even a quarter. You know, I don't know what that number is, but it is those rare items that sort of raise awareness of something where there may be some gray areas, areas that this Board may collectively want to chime in on. We have a platform. We have a professional, dedicated staff that does an incredible job of identifying and determining positions on bills. But again, having said that, from time to time, there may be, and I think there are a small, select number of bills that would warrant discussion from this body, that maybe they don't align clearly with our platform. Maybe there's some gray area. Maybe it's important enough for this Board to make a statement or a position. That is really all we're asking this body to consider. There's not a vehicle for that now, so think about the last legislative session in 2023. There was one particular Assembly Bill. It was introduced by a Clark County member. If you recall, that proposed to appoint seats to all school boards. Remember that bill? Now, ultimately, it was limited to Clark County, but initially, that was the original part of the bill to essentially provide appointed seats on school boards across the state. Now, as trustees, we didn't take a formal position on that, and frankly, I think we should have. Instead, some of us, myself, I think Trustee Smith at the time, another Board President, we wrote individual letters opposing the legislation, but we had to do it as individuals. So, wouldn't that be something that this body might want to chime in to have a unified voice and send a message of solidarity in that particular case in opposition? Another piece of legislation, AB 316. Again, this is just an example. I'm not suggesting we take a position on this, but AB 316 is a bill in the Legislature now. It essentially, and Annie, you'll appreciate this. This requires school boards to have a pupil on the Board. Well, you know, on face value, it looks like we comply with that. We're probably leading the way. But interestingly enough, it requires county commissions, county commissions to appoint the pupil, not the school board. Now, most of you were just at a conference on student voice, so I know how important student voice is, this organization, this Board. Is that something that we would likely want to oppose or get behind? Because when I look at our legislative platform, there's no real alignment. There is some, but you could argue perhaps that it's a gray area, or maybe it rises to a matter where we want to ask questions, discuss, and take a position. And so, by bringing some of these bills, and I emphasize, you know, rarely, I'm not, again, a very selective amount. Our legislative team, in fact, would be in a better position as well because they'll see that as agendized. They'll be in a better position to provide this Board background, some greater understanding. We know a lot of these bills are dead on arrival before they're, you know, once they're introduced. Oftentimes, it's not necessary to take a position. But sometimes collectively taking a position is going to reduce the threat of other Board members going rogue as well, or Board members having varying positions that may cause confusion. So, President Smith and I have worked together. We've consulted with our Office of General Counsel on this topic. We had some earlier concepts. It had some legal technicalities, and I appreciate Chief Legal Counsel Rembarde's help. Thank you, sir. In the end, though, I believe it's a fair and reasonable approach to allowing this Board to have a voice on select legislation in concert, in close coordination with the Superintendent and staff. It's just something we don't have now. So, that hopefully gives you a perspective of what we're attempting to do here to bring some better clarity to that particular position, as well as to have this Board have a voice from time to time on those items that are important. This, again, and again, I do want to underscore this. This is not about any particular piece of legislation in the Legislature right now at all. It is just something that I've noticed, and through conversations with President Smith, we collectively agreed to bring this to the Board. So, thank you for allowing me to give you some background.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Vice President Mayberry, for succinctly putting that in. Very easy to understand. I mean, the fact that you identified two, we know that there are hundreds, if not thousands, of bills that come, occur during a legislative process. So, the fact that you just identified two, that without a doubt leads me to believe that you are correct. This is not something we're going to be looking at a quarter of. It's going to be very rare, but when it happens, we should have a mechanism. Thank you.
And thank you, Vice President Mayberry. I appreciate that. For all of the colleagues, if you're wondering what JJ has up on the screen, it is the Attachment B. It's the Proposed Revisions. And thank you so much, Vice President Mayberry, for covering all of that. Some other things that you'll see in this draft language is the previous role existed, Legislative Representative exists. But there was really no direction on when or how to appoint this person, and that's why we don't have one right now. So, some of the process improvements that you see here is bringing down to choosing the person, the length that they would serve, and then also ensuring that all trustees still do have a voice in this process. No one's individual rights as an elected trustee or member of this Board are taken away by this. And it also memorializes that individual authority that we all have that is given to us in our elected roles and from the community. But it does bring structure to when we choose this person. By the way, we are not choosing this person right now. This is just the first step in a multi-step process. But I did want to point out that Vice President Mayberry and I have held very close to the original intent, which you see above, carried that forward, offered some clarification on the advisory role of it, and then provided those guardrails for the selection, which we feel, again, any good policy should not create confusion. It should bring clarity, and so I just wanted to offer that as well, too. And so, what you see here in that entire news section is what it is that we're proposing, and I see Dr. Nicolette's light on.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. It's just kind of a reflection on some of the content. And will there be a revision or an addition of an administrative regulation to, I guess, comply or give the particulars of how this relationship will evolve?
I guess I would wonder, do we have an admin reg? Because we already have this in policy, so do we already have an admin reg on this? Because again, we're not creating anything new. We're clarifying it. I don't know the answer to that. Do you?
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Nicolette. I think it's a great question. I know that right now, it seems like our first step is the desire to be able to offer input on various items that rise to the level of the Board, and I think that's where our decision is today. I think as far as looking at a regulation to see what the relationship is and to clarify anything that might be needed in there, we can certainly take a look. It's my understanding that this is a, I think it would be characterized as a minor adjustment, and so, we can take a look and double-check. So, I think it's a good point for us to just be able to look back and see.
As a general rule, we don't have administrative regulations on the 9,000 series. That's your policies, and so, we don't generally have regulations on that.
All right, seeing no other lights on, maybe we'll go to public comment. JJ, do we have any public comment for this item?
Pablo Navaduran.
Welcome, Mr. Navaduran.
I want to speak direct to what the Mayberry comments say. So, I do support Ann Mayberry's opinion about the legislature. We propose that legislature, that bill, to unelected school Board members to be on a Washington School Board. That happened on the Washington Library system. That means all five members are appointed by county commissioners, commissioners. So, I don't want to have, I don't want to make this school Board to make an unelected bureaucrat, just like county commissioner did over libraries and a state legislature and the state's government. So, we're in local position. The school, if you want for the school Board race, you're not wanting for failed government, state government. You want it for a local government school Board, local race. We don't need any Washington or Carson City influence in the Washington County School District. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Could I just ask a clarifying question? I guess my question is, when I first looked at this, I just would like to know the history of why was this representative tied to the Nevada Association of School Boards? Is there any, do we have any history on that connection? Because before we dismantle that, I want to make sure that that's not an, was it? My thought was that maybe in the past, we didn't have our own lobbying firm that was due in legislative group that was helping that, and so, we kind of relied on what we called NASB. And that was my thought, but I never want to make the assumption. So, I just want to make sure that there's not a particular reason why this policy initially was tied to that Nevada Association, because they also have a hired lobbyist group that follows legislation, but that's really for the whole state versus what's for our district. And some of those things are the same. And as to Vice President Mayberry's point, some of those things may not be. What we need here may not be what Clark needs or White Pine or Esmeralda, but then sometimes they are for the betterment of the whole state. So, I can see how working alongside the Nevada Association sounds great, but I also think that's a huge lift for one of us to not only be tied in with them and doing legislative work with them as well as following it for the district. That seems like a lot for one person to do. And I know that, I know that Dr. Nicolette has done some of that because she is the Legislative Liaison for NASB. So, I am in favor of clarifying this because I think it has been a huge lift that we have kind of assumed that Dr. Nicolette has been kind of filling this role, but it hasn't been very clear. So, my question is, do we know why it was tied to NASB? And maybe nobody knows, and we just don't have an answer, and that's okay, too.
Actually, we do.
I will keep it very simple. At this point in time, I do not think the history is relevant. That happened many years ago. We're here now trying to move forward.
I don't think I ever thought in my life I would say that history wasn't relevant. But, okay, I'm going to go with it. It's really hard for me to say that. But, okay, sounds good. We can move on and grow and find new ways to do things. I like it.
And I think that speaks to exactly why we're doing this. We're attempting to bring clarity to that role because it's not clearly defined, and we're trying to give us a voice on select legislation. Let me be clear. We have a professional staff, a lobbyist. This legislative, in my view, and trying to, it was difficult to find words, but it is not intended, you know, this person, this Board member, and I'll just say, it should not be in the building every day. You know, there'll be times when there may be some assistance in testifying. I hope that all of us have an opportunity to testify on behalf of this organization. We should spread the wealth. We're just trying to find somebody that can help, that represent the Board in alignment with Board governance and our informed oversight to really, at times, if we have to ask some questions, do a little deeper dive, take a position on some of those key pieces of legislation that really impact our governing. I hope that provides some clarity.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm ready to make a motion. I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed revision of Board Policy 9055, Section 5, Subsection G, related to the Legislative Representative and initiates the 13-day public review and comment period.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Clerk Woodley. We have a second by Trustee Hall. Seeing no lights on, all those in favor?
I have to ask a question. Is this the language that the Board is approving?
For clarification, for the record, that's a primitive yes. This is the language as presented.
I presume the cross-out means we're not approving that, though?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And is this intended to replace the current 9055G? I only saw this language yesterday, so I haven't, so I need to understand because this runs through our office.
No, absolutely. That is correct. Yes, that is the intent.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for that clarification. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you so much, colleagues. And that closes item 3.03. We do have a guest with us for one of these items that does need to head out. So, we're going to go ahead and pause on item 3.04 and move ahead now to item 3.05. This is the presentation and possible action to provide preliminary approval to the proposed revisions to Board Policy 5250, alcohol, tobacco, and controlled substances, student prevention and intervention, and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period. This will be an item for possible action, and we have with us today our Chief Student Services Officer, Dr. Paul Lamarcas, who is joined by our Chair of the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, Natalie Sanchez. And so, colleagues, before they get started, this is, it's like a day of Board policy. This is an example of when the responsible office, or in this case, also one of our commissions, comes forward to the Board and says, "We would like to make some amendments." And so, they're now bringing that to us. But hold on to your hats because we have a third discussion coming later today as well, too. So, take it away, Dr. Lamarcas and Ms. Sanchez.
Thank you, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst. For the record, Paul Lamarcas, Chief Student Supports Officer. And yes, I'm joined by the amazing Natalie Sanchez, friend and Chair of the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. In January, we presented, Administration presented to you some measures around safety, and at that time, we included some recommendations that the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission had made, including a revision to this particular policy. And we had told you we could get that to you within a couple of months, and I think that meeting was on January 14th, so we're just under the clock. So, what I'm going to do, you have the language, so I'm just going to very quickly go through at a high level the changes that are proposed. And then, obviously, Natalie and myself, and I believe Catherine Loudon might be in the other room. Others, Annie Zucker, our co-chair, might be able to answer any questions that you do have. So, there's very slight revision in the Purpose section, and really what this is, is it just makes it very succinct. These substances are bad, and they cause harm, and they affect student achievement. So, we're just trying to clear that up, be very succinct with that. In the Definition section, our staff felt it was very important to explicitly introduce opioids and fentanyl into that. into that, as well as a section that clearly defines electronic smoking devices. This is really what, that's part of the issue that we're getting at. And I was absent from the policy previously, or it was, the issue was kind of skirted. We also include definitions, it's called vapor products. So we've got the smoking device itself, and then the product that's used within the device. And so there's some clarity in there, I believe you'll see. When we get into the policy section, this is really the heart of our policies. And here's where we have the prohibitions. I know there was a question regarding this in the follow-up. So Section 2 of this policy really just says, we pro following, and then you have Sections A through. And within A and B, we're talking about the prohibition of all controlled substances being under the influence or being in the possession of those. We have Section C, which talks very specifically about tobacco, nicotine products. We have Section D, which is talking about electronic smoking devices. That's a new section to this particular policy. And then the rest is just, it's cleanup. And then finally, there's a section on substance prevention, intervention, and recovery. Part of the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission recommendation was this is a very thorny issue. It's a complex issue. And to address it, you need to have a comprehensive framework that touches all of these areas. Originally, I will tell you, there was far more detail that was included in the policy regarding these things. After review from multiple offices within the district, and in the spirit of a policy versus a regulation, some of that language was taken out, or is recommended to be taken out, and some that we thought about putting in is not. This section also authorizes the superintendent to have us build a regulation that will help us in the execution of the policy. And so that's where we would head next after approval of this. And I know that's a lengthy period. Those are the changes. And so we, we're here for any questions that you may have.
So, Sanchez, I was wondering if you could offer a little bit of insight. So the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission came. There was a different chair at the time. And just so that we provide a little bit of background on this, Trustee Westlake at the time really was a champion for wanting to address some of these things. Of course, it did pass by a majority vote of the board. But can you share a little bit about what the discussion was that led to these particular changes?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Smith, and thank you to the Board of Trustees for having us here today. So as a commission, one of the things that we really took to heart, Trustee Westlake, was your impassioned, you know, discussion about vaping, and also really hearing from families and from parents, their fears for their kids. And, you know, what were we doing to be helpful in that way? So we have had presentations by folks coming in explaining vaping detection to us. We've had one of those. And, you know, one of the things, one of the reasons I'm here today, too, is to kind of reaffirm some of those commitments. So we do have that on our next meeting slated for more presentation about vape detection, also to deal with bathroom safety, because we know that a lot of these things that are addressed in the policy certainly happen in the bathrooms. So we're tying those two together, but really trying to create more of a comprehensive framework for addressing some of these concerns, including some of the mental health supports. That's my specialty. So I'm always looking for, what are the ways that we can support our youth in schools to maybe understand that not everybody's doing it, but certainly it is being done. And how can we help make an environment so that it's not so attractive?
I appreciate that. And you answered all of my follow-up questions in your answer. You are clearly a very good chair. And in reviewing your application when you were applying for Safe and Healthy Schools, you are a mental health professional. Can you expand a little bit on that? Did your expertise in the committees, or the commission's expertise, you worked with staff in the development of these recommendations?
Absolutely. So Catherine Loudon and other folks from counseling were able to present to us and kind of spoke to some of the concerns. Also, some of the data that we've received over the years from the SOS Project, that's been very helpful to kind of understand what's going on mental health-wise for some of the kids. But also, just as a clinician in this community, I've been doing that for 20 years now. I'm very happy and fortunate to do it. We see kids from all areas within the Washington County School District. And there's 36 clinicians that I have at my office. And that's, thank you, JJ, for letting me speak a little bit earlier. That's why I have to leave. But, you know, one of the things I've noticed, just anecdotally as a clinician across the years, is the rise of vaping. And I think kids not really understanding, you know, what it does, not only to them as a legal status and as a problem that way, but also really having a sense of what it does to your brain. You know, at this age of development, if you start using a substance, you're much more likely to continue on with that substance as you get older and using other forms of intervention, or addiction, I should say. So.
Thank you so much. And thank you for that insight onto the thought process that went into this. So that definitely answered all the questions that I had. Thank you.
No, you go.
Okay. First of all, all great, great work going forward. A lot of changes. I see that this is the preliminary approval. Has Legal taken a look at it yet already?
Yes, Legal reviewed it. Sarah Montalvo in particular, but the whole Legal team probably reviewed it. And several offices in the district have, yes.
Natalie, good to see you. Full disclosure, Natalie and I went to high school together because this is small community. So Natalie, you brought up a point that just sort of sparked a thought for me. And this is not, this is just something that I'm wondering if, at some point, would be really, really interesting information, if we could collect our new schools that have a different bathroom setup, if we could look at what's happening in those schools versus the schools that don't have that bathroom setup. Because I've heard through, you know, school visits and friends who are teachers, as you know, we have a lot of people we went to high school with that work in this district. And there's, you know, we're hearing that some bathrooms have to be closed during some times. And so I'm just wondering if that, that could be really great information as we move forward with our FMP. It's always on my mind. I can't help it. So I'm just curious if that's something that Safe and Healthy Schools has talked about with the new bathrooms at all. And I'm not asking, adding more to your guys' plate. I'm just wondering if, as a district, that would be something that we could potentially look at eventually, if you guys haven't already?
We haven't yet, but we love data. There's a lot of us on the commission right now that are pretty into data and research. So, you know, we can ask and see if we can get that info.
May I elaborate?
Yes, please.
So on our April agenda for Safe and Healthy Schools Commission, Joel Pejoto from Dilworth and Tristan McElhany will both be presenting on bathroom safety. The New Hug High School is one with the different kind of bathroom structure. Dilworth is one of our older buildings. So we'll start exploring that.
Great. Yeah, I'm just very curious about it. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, President Smith. You guys, this is wonderful. This is absolutely wonderful. You know, we say we care about our kids, and we want the best for them. And we want to be supportive. We don't want to come down as the heavies, like, you know, a police state. But we can't say that we care about our kids and then let things go on that we know are so detrimental and will affect them into their future. And in that way, it's going to affect our community, our society, and we're not going to be as healthy and as strong as we will need to be. And I just think this shows a lot of love, that we truly, truly care about our kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Westlake.
JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
Pablo Nava Duran.
Hello, guys. My name is Pablo Nava Duran. And I do support this board policy, but you miss a point. So they're like a smoke shop, like across the school from Worcester. But it's not just Worcester, but many urban, urban school area who cross the street, block one way to two block away. They're like a smoke shop who's selling vape, weed, marijuana, tobacco, and alcohol. So that's the biggest concern. So I know it's not up to you. It was a state legislature, so I want to see state legislature to move away from at least a half miles away from the school. We do know the Mount Deshaun, Mount Deshaun, where we do some school in urban area, area. So take a look. For example, you see the smoke shop, weed shop, alcohol shop, like across Worcester High School. You know, I think the look at the state legislature, at least a half, half a mile away because they're working so hard to prevent this from happening. Because we do have vaping in the bathroom and the classroom. You got this up there. I have to call the office for vaping. You know, it's not, it's not safe, kids. Okay? Not safe. So they're working so hard, you know, the new one, they have a bath, they have more than the admin will know. They know which student will smoke weed or vape. They know them, get them out of here, and then make sure, then try to help them to rehabilitation. But older school is a tougher, it's a tough job for admin to go west when boys and girls, because when you're like, admin, for example, if Mr. Kishen went to the, you know, to catch a, you know, female student, you know, girl west, had to, they know how, they cannot go. You have to call the female admin or dean to get them out of here. So think about, think about the smoke shop and class of schools. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nava Duran. I'll go to Vice President.
Any more public comment? I would like to make a motion.
I think Vice President Mayberry might have a...
I have to say something first?
Yeah, I apologize. I just, I just have a quick clarifying question. I apologize, Dr. Lamarcas. And we corresponded a little bit on it. I just, for the record, I just want to make crystal clear, because when we talk about electronic smoking device, it talks a lot about tobacco products. There's no mention of cannabis. We talk about the vapor product. I don't, I just don't see cannabis in there. But I do see cannabis and marijuana, the controlled substance. So I just want to be crystal clear for the record that vaping, it does include cannabis-related items. I mean, that's prohibited. That's, if I could get...
Yes, the answer is yes. It does include that. In fact, it includes any liquid form that is inhaled through a vape detector, whether it's got THC or just some fruity chemical. It's not allowed in the schools.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I am ready to, do you want to make a statement?
I would. And it's coming off of what Mr. Nava Duran said. And I appreciate his voice. I think it's important to say how proud I am of our district for jumping out, getting ahead of this, and being an example, setting an example for the rest, the rest of our society, and saying that we're ready to take a strong stand. And by setting this example, maybe others, as what Mr. Pablo Duran said, Nava Duran said, that they'll think about these things, what's, what's being put up around our schools, and what our children are exposed to on a daily basis. But we have to start somewhere. And I'm sure proud of you guys for all the work you've done, and for us as a district wanting to take this step. So thank you.
All right, third time's the charm, Dr. Nicolette.
That is my lucky number. I would actually like to add to that. As, as our students evolve in society, so do we. And I'm very proud of us for that, too. To that, I move that the Board of Trustees gets preliminary approval to the proposed revisions of Board Policy 5250, alcohol, tobacco, and controlled substances, student prevention and intervention, and initiates the 13-day public review and comment period.
I second.
What happened?
My, Trustee Phoenix was going to second it. I don't, I think, I don't, I didn't recognize the second. I didn't recognize the second.
I will, I will, I will concede to my, my friend and my fellow colleague.
And I second that.
And the manager of the meeting recognizes your second, Trustee Phoenix. So we have a motion by Trustee Dr. Diana Glett. We have a second by Trustee JJ Phoenix. Seeing no lights on, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Chair Sanchez. Thank you, Dr. Lamarcas. That, I, I love it. I've never seen a round of applause for a policy amendment. So that is awesome. I love it. I love it. I love the vibe. All right, team, that closes item 3.05. And we are going back in history and open item 3.04, Milestones and Momentum Presentation to Provide the Board of Trustees an Overview of Progress Made on Strategic Plan Goal 2: Student Voice and Advocacy. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. And we have a great group with us. So we recognize again Dr. Paul Lamarcas, our Chief Student Services Officer, joined by Principal of Worcester High School, David Kitchen, Amabel Lewis, student at Worcester High School, Nicole Ramirez, who we recently saw. Good to see you. She was up here at the dais a meeting ago, another student at Worcester High School. And then we also have Lindsay Kendrick, our Director of Behavior and Student Support, and Trish Schaefer, our Director of MTSS and SEL. So, Dr. Lamarcas, take it away.
Thank you, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board. For the record, Paul Lamarcas, Chief Student Support Officer. It's my pleasure to introduce this item. I'll only be up here for a minute, and I will introduce Mr. Kitchen. The bulk of this presentation will be delivered by Lindsay Kendrick and Trish Schaefer, but we will first spotlight Worcester, the amazing Worcester Colts. And so on the next slide, you do have some fast facts, and you can read those. What I want to do is just talk just for a moment about Worcester and my experience there. So your trustees, you've all been in many, many schools, and you've been in many, many businesses. And you walk into a place, and you can feel right away. Is it antiseptic? Is it, is it warm? Is it dry? Is it flat? So Worcester, even with a very wide-open design, has never been anything but welcoming and inclusive. They have always valued student voice. They've always included students in decision-making. And I don't mean just now. I mean, for as long as I've been in this district and in the state, which is pretty, pretty long, a lot longer than these two young ladies have been alive. There were dark days in Worcester. I believe Dr. Parks was the quarterback of the football team. And I don't want to talk about that era, because he's probably not here to defend himself. But, but you'll remember Debbie Byersdorff, she was our deputy for years. She was an amazing principal at Worcester, valued student voice. Leah Kuescher, now Leah Ramsey in our Professional Learning Department, just a tremendous leader. I trusted her with my kids, and I love Leah. And now David Kitchen, who I met when he was at Spanish Springs High School, has always had kids at the anchor of what he does. And he'll take Worcester to even higher places. So with no further ado, David Kitchen.
Thank you, Dr. Lamarcas. President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board, I'm before you today as the proud, the very proud principal of Worcester High School. Many of you know that this is just my second year at Worcester. My journey as an educator started in Brooklyn, New York City. It has taken me through Galena High School, International IB School in Mexico City, which was my first principalship, Spanish Springs High School, TMCC High School, North Star Online School, and now Worcester High School. I have worked in schools all over this district, and frankly, all over this continent. And I can tell you with confidence that Worcester is truly a special place. Speaking to our theme of safety and connection, I joined Worcester last year as the interim principal, and there was already a robust student voice system in place. I heard loud and clear from our students, from families, from many members of our community, that campus safety was a priority. safety was a priority. Being able to partner with our Student Advisory Board on several of these projects, such as traffic around our campus and plans for our upcoming single point of entry, has been an amazing experience. Looking at pillar B, we believe that our entire community has capacity to have positive impact on student learning. This includes local businesses, churches, community volunteers, families. Sometimes this means inviting community to our campus, such as this past weekend when our Student Advisory Board planned and hosted a conference for our entire vertical. Sometimes this means attending community events. At the beginning of the school year, when we hosted our back-to-school event, for us, this meant asking our families if they could share with us the unique needs and strengths of their children. Looking at pillar D, one of my core values as a leader has always been to partner high accountability with high support. Over this past year, we have been proud to celebrate that our ACT English Language Proficiency scores have shown incredible gains for our Free and Reduced Lunch and our EL populations, outperforming the district as a whole for both of these special populations. Through our advisory program, we offer academic supports built into our school day to support all of our students. My favorite portrait of a learner quality is global citizenship. You probably know that Worcester proudly hosts the district, the district's International Baccalaureate Program. You may also know that just this year, we also launched our bilingual program, which provides students the opportunity to take up to three core classes in Spanish. This is a first for northern Nevada at the high school level. Global citizenship is a quality that naturally fits with these amazing programs. Global citizenship also challenges us, challenges us all to intentionally act with integrity and compassion, which is directly in line with the IB learner profile and the core values of our community. It is now my pleasure to introduce to you two amazing Worcester global citizens, Amabel Lewis and Nicole Ramirez.
Good afternoon. My name is Nicole Ramirez. I'm the student body president over at Worcester High School.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Amabel Lewis, and I'm a member of our Student Advisory Board over at Worcester High School. Uh, before we get, begin, I would like to do a quick shout-out to Nadia Montejano. She's our student body vice president at Worcester. Um, she's back there. Yeah, you can say that. So, uh, we just wanted to say thank you to Nadia for everything she does behind the scenes for our school. Um, I think one of, looking at safety and connection, I think one of the core understandings we have in our community at Worcester is the integral role connection plays in fostering a safe and welcoming learning environment for all. Um, our Student Advisory Board and all of the individual relationships, I know so many members of the student population have formed with the staff. Um, it's just one way students are able to voice their concerns, and especially those concerns that have to do with safety.
Um, we stay connected within our community by providing resources, resources in both English and Spanish. We have a large diverse population, and by that, um, this past Saturday, we had our, our cult community conference. It helps parents become more a part of their students' education, and we provide agendas, our intro videos, and any resources in both languages, um, as well as translation devices. Um, looking on to pillar B, it is very important for, to have strong relationships among our family, communities, and schools. It ensures that any projects that students take the lead on, um, run smoothly with the help of our admin. For example, we host our annual kindness week that happens every single year. Um, our students with special needs can be limited to certain, to certain extracurricular activities that Worcester does, and by this, we do activities throughout the week, throughout the week that are inclusive for everyone. Um, and by Friday, we have, on our last day of the kindness week, we have our cornhole tournament where it brings everybody together, and it watches our students' special needs participate in this. It brings a bunch of smiles, and it's definitely my favorite time of the year, um, and it builds just a stronger community within our students and our staff.
All right, uh, looking at pillar D, culture of excellence and accountability. Um, part of what makes Worcester so special, or at least for me, is, uh, the avenues we provide for us to challenge themselves academically. Um, for me, at least, uh, excellence and accountability doesn't just mean getting by doing the easy thing. Um, it means that we find ways to challenge students to make the most out of their education. Uh, Mr. Kitchen talked about before, we have our IB diploma, our IB program. We also have our bilingual program, um, which is just a great way that Worcester is looking to serve its Spanish-speaking population, um, and allowing students to pursue academic excellence in another language, or maybe their native language. Um, I've also been a part of the IB diploma program for two years now, and I continue to be impressed with the ways it has allowed me to challenge myself and, uh, prepare for my further education. Um, it's important to note that a culture of excellence and accountability extends beyond just academics. Um, it also means challenging students and staff to find ways that they can make meaningful contributions to their community. A great example of this is a project that our Student Advisory worked, Board worked on, uh, starting last year, moving into this year, to get the road with, has, uh, two of our main school exits, Matley Lane, turned into a school zone. Uh, this project allowed us as students to get involved in our school's safety and do something that would normally be left up to adults. Um, we were able to challenge ourselves in learning about, uh, like, project planning and traffic control, and just, and how to effectively communicate with others. Uh, for me, this is a really great way this Student Advisory Board has allowed myself and, uh, other students to participate in excellence outside of academics. Uh, we weren't able to turn Matley Lane into a school zone, but we did work with NDOT to get a paint and sign package and other safety measures put into a project they were already working on, uh, and, yeah, it's just gonna make that road safer. Um, coming out of this project, one of the things I'm certain of is that it would not have been possible without collaboration. Um, it also wouldn't have poss- been possible if we as students hadn't been able to hold each other accountable, to do our part in making our school a better place. Uh, further, it meant that we as students had to learn how to use our voice to hold the adults in our community accountable for doing their job to make our school a safer place. Uh, moving on, talk about my favorite portrait quality. Both Nicole and I kind of decided, uh, we like skilled communicator and collaborator. Um, I think what this means to me is being able to show respect to those who are different from us, and being able to collaborate with them. And this is just a really critical part of being a person in any setting. Um, it allows us, it's, it's a skill that allows us to show empathy and, um, be kind to others and succeed wherever we're planning.
And it builds just the stronger, stronger relationships within the students and staff, and is important mainly to just get anything done. So, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. I am so proud of you. This was incredible. You have represented Worcester so well. Uh, so I know Superintendent Ernst is gonna say a few words, but before he does, could you take a minute and share with our public and everyone here a little bit about the IB program? People hear us talk a lot about AP, which is Advanced Placement. We have lots of different types of coursework here, but can you take a moment to share what IB is all about at Worcester?
Absolutely, yeah. So IB, um, it's an emphasis, of course, on just, it's a rigorous academic program, but it's one that's basically everywhere in the world. Um, we only have one school here, but it's in schools around the United States, everywhere else. And I think one of the main things, um, that it does for students is it focuses on building, uh, well-rounded students. So of course, there's a focus on academics, but there's a focus on, uh, for instance, we do a CAS project, which is, we have to do creativity, activity, service, and show how we work that into our academics. Um, so yeah, it's just, it's an international program, uh, with rigorous academics, but also just a focus on building well-rounded students.
Well, you are the model for that right now, Amabel, you and Nicole as well. So thank you so much. Superintendent Ernst?
Thank you, Madam President. Amabel and Nicole, what a pleasure to have you here. Of course, Mr. Kitchen, it's great to have you as well. I've had the pleasure of getting to know both of you over the past couple of years, and you both just embody, um, and exude a confidence, the favorite portrait quality being skilled communicators and collaborators. I think you guys hit the nail on the head on that. I think really, um, with your leadership and then getting to know the entire student voice team at Worcester, it really is a model, uh, that we have within our district, and that's a lot, uh, in part to your leadership, your enthusiasm. And so with that, just behind you there, we have Deputy Superintendent McMaster, and we have a couple of awards that we wanted to give to both of you for being exemplary students in the Washoe County School District. So thank you for your presentation, and thank you for the great work that you both are doing.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we're gonna get the team back up here. Just as a little bit, um, of a notice to everyone, we will take a break after the conclusion of this item, okay? All right, and we have with us here Lindsay Kendrick, our Director of Behavior and Student Support, and Trish Schaefer, our Director of MTSS and SEL, wearing your Student Voice Conference T-shirts, so they're not just matching for fun. Perfect for the day. Almost like it was planned that way.
Telling you. I don't want to follow that. They did so awesome, so, um, so Lindsay Kendrick, Director of Behavior and Student Supports for the record, uh, Superintendent Ernst, President Smith, Board of Trustees, thank you so much for having us today to, just give us a chance to share all the great things that have been happening around Goal Two. Um, I am the proud owner of two parts of Goal Two, so you're going to have to listen to me for a little bit, um, but super exciting things that are happening that we just want to share and highlight. Um, as many of you know, today was our Student Voice Conference, and in my opinion, it was a great hit. So, um, the kids did a great job presenting all the work that they've been doing. We had almost every middle school and high school there presenting and collaborating and listening and learning from one another. We've already had schools reach out to their facilitators saying, hey, I heard this great thing happening in McQueen or Dilworth or whatever, and, and we want to try it. Let's talk about it. So it has already shown great, um, benefits, which, which is, is awesome for us. It would not have happened if not for my three Student Voice facilitators that I want to please introduce here today. I have Brad Rose, Caprice Young, and Erica Reed in the audience. And they have just done stellar work around not just the conference, but meeting with all the schools and growing student voice in our middle schools and high schools. And it's only March, so we have lots more time to continue that growth, and I ideally start getting out into those elementary schools as well. Um, a goal for them for next year is to work on professional development for teachers, so that we're seeing more student voice in the classrooms. So they have done great things, but we also know we have many, many more things, um, in our future as well. I wanted to spotlight quickly, um, Dilworth Middle School. I know Worcester did a great job, but I have to shout-out to a middle school as well. They presented today on grit and how they were able to get their school uniform policy adjusted for this next coming school year. They also did some mental health work. My favorite, however, is the kids were seeing, um, more tardies and cellphone use than they wanted to see it in their schools because they were going to the bathroom for grooming purposes, maybe to, you know, makeup and the hair. So they went to their administrators and asked for mirrors in the classroom, so that they didn't have to spend that time in the bathroom or using their phones. No misinstruction because they're still in the room. Maybe they just need to get some out of their eye, whatever it is, but we're so proud of them for doing that, and that's what student voice is all about. So I wanted to give them a shout-out today as well. They're, they're not here today, but they deserve the shout-out, so I wanted to do that for them.
Ms. Kendrick, while we're on this slide, can you share with us what were the changes that they wanted to see and that they helped make happen for the school uniform policy?
They will not have a school uniform next year. They will follow the district's dress code policy, but not the uniform. So they were able to, with grit, that's their big thing. They did not give up on, on it, but they just kept working at it, and they were able to. So, super exciting, super exciting for them.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. I also wanted to spotlight, as you all know, we have a district Student Advisory Council that my friend Annie here is the president of, and they work all year. We meet monthly with representatives from all the high schools, and they have worked with many different groups around cellphone policy, nutrition services. We had absenteeism and teacher appreciation discussions, and mental health and drug use conversations. In addition to all that, they've worked in three groups on the three topics that you see up on the board that they have chosen, the student wellness, the career and college readiness, and staff and student respect. Annie is part of the respect group, and I'm just gonna have her talk briefly about all the great things that that group has done.
Um, I know I've talked about it before in my board reports, but the respect group has worked on making, um, videos for each school. We're aiming for high school for sure, and then, um, whatever middle schools are able to, we want a video, um, explaining what respect is to each person. So we have, you know, video. It's just one admin, a teacher and a student, and they're explaining what respect means to them and the different pieces and the importance of respect, because the foundation for learning, I personally think, is respect to make an environment at school where you want to be. So we decided to do that, and we've gotten a few, and we're aiming, um, to have almost all the high schools have a video by May so that we can get a compilation put together and hopefully present it here.
Yes, awesome work happening in, in all those groups. Um, I also had Dr. Laura Davidson, um, has helped us put three questions added into the student, um, climate survey, um, that you'll see up here. These were some questions that were important to us to see. Not only are we seeing voice in our, in our schools, but are, are there changes happening from, from those voices? Um, and, and in this, you'll see that sixty-eight percent are saying that they, they can share their ideas, and sixty percent are saying, hey, there's changes being made because of them. And it's not always gonna be a yes, and that's what we're teaching our Student Advisory Councils, is sometimes it's a no. Brad Rose has always used this example, and I love it, is most of our middle school Student Advisory Councils ask for a longer lunch. And, and the, the answer's usually no, but they don't know why. So they're hearing now, well, if we have a longer lunch, that means you have to be in school longer because the state requires us, requires us to have a certain amount of minutes a day. So then they hear that, and they're like, okay, never mind. So it's, it's knowing what that no. So it's knowing what that no, why that no is what it is, and learning from that. So no, it's not a yes, and there's not always going to be major change, like we're here from Worcester. They didn't get the, you know, what they wanted, but they got something, and that's awesome. And that's what Student Voice is all about. So we're super excited about that. But we do want to grow that 60% so that we can have even more kids feeling that they're being listened to and things are happening because of it. So super exciting work around Student Voice. Any questions around Student Voice before I move to my next part? Super exciting. These are great things to talk about. I am not complaining. So my next one is around extracurricular activities and the expansion. And this, as Superintendent Ernst mentioned, in February, we've only been working on this this year, and we've already seen tremendous growth. One thing that did happen this year that I want to give a big shout out is I hired a coordinator of clubs and activities, Chris McInaney. I'd like to give him a shout out. Thank you for being here. And he has worked diligently with schools, getting schools to have more opportunities for clubs and activities, and also has worked with Kyle Kemp and the Department of Accountability to get a tracking system in Infinite Campus, which has been huge because we've never before tracked clubs and activity participation, and we are doing that for the first time. So it's super exciting. I'm going to talk about some numbers in the next slide, but I also wanted to highlight the expansion of sixth grade athletics. We have hundreds of sixth graders participating in sports that never had that opportunity at our schools before. So that's huge and super exciting, and I want to thank you all for allowing that to happen and funding that because that is amazing, and it's just exciting to see all those kids So these were the ones I want to talk about. So like I said, we developed a tracking system in Infinite Campus. And what that is, if you're not aware, is it is on every student's schedule now. On the very bottom row of every student's schedule, it says clubs/activities so that we know immediately if a student is not involved in something. And we are saying to ourselves, what can we be doing? What questions can we be asking these kids? Why aren't they feeling connected and part of our school? Maybe because they're not part of something. They're not part of that club. They're not part of that sport. They're not engaged in their school outside of their coursework, which is great, but we want to see them involved in something else. We're up to 42% now. I think in February or December, when we gave our numbers to Superintendent Ernst, we were at 33. We're moving that needle up. We have lots of room to grow. But in my opinion, having that tracking system and having the adults in the building see when a student does not have something on there, we need to build that relationship with that student, build that connection, and be asking the questions of ourselves. Are we not providing enough opportunities? Are we not asking the right questions? But to me, that is just to, yes, kids that are involved in a lot of things, that's awesome to see on theirs. But again, for me, the red flag is when they don't have something on there, and talking to those kids and asking those questions. So lots have happened there.
Ms. Kendrick, I'm going to jump in. One, I got to tell you, you are awesome. If this is how your meetings are run, I want in because I love the energy. No, 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 do not make yourself smaller. This is International Women's History Month. Don't make yourself smaller. You take up all the space. Take up all the space. Yes, 100%, plus one, I love what you're bringing. So I was at Shaw last week for a middle school wrestling match, and I was in the girls' bathroom. When I came out, I saw that I knew we were going to talk about this. The clubs that they had that just started this year and ones that just started in this semester, just to get, I was like, I can't believe this. So at Shaw alone, they have Homework Club, Pumpkin and Gardening Club, Color Guard, Fellowship of Christian Students, The Brave Space Club, Dungeons and Dragons, Book Club, Robotics Club, and then the clubs that just started in January of this year, Herpetology, so like snakes, I assume, Animation Club, and Chess Club. And they had all these signs up and everybody, and kids had written on it, and be like, awesome, yeah. And I was like, of course, we're going to have this item. And so I just wanted you to know, going into other schools and seeing these clubs, seeing the posters, seeing the kids write on them, so excited, like you really see that when you walk into all the schools. And so I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Yes, they are coming up with all sorts of clubs, and it's great. And it's finding what the kids want to do and hearing from them, and there's new clubs that we were talking about, like always new things. So that's super exciting. I love that.
Sorry, just one thing. I also, ditto, I love the energy. So Superintendent Ernst got to share this slide with the legislature this last week. And then Trustee Westlake and I got to meet with one of our Assembly members who brought up this slide and was like, so is this happening around the rest of the state? Because it needs to be. So it's an impact. So I just wanted to shout that out, that it was this one particular slide made a huge impact on Legislative Committee that Superintendent Ernst, so nice job on this.
And please know, it is not just Chris and I at all. It is, and I do want to say that the tracking system did include a lot of people to get that training. We had counselors out training people. We had the Office of Accountability, obviously. We had student accounting. We had all the groups that needed to be part of this have come together to make this a reality. So it's just been a huge team effort on all of our parts.
Absolutely. And that was one of the big things that we heard from the Assembly after that was simply that now they can easily track the impact of the additional dollars, and that is so big for them to be able to say it's making an impact and it's important. And so the fact that we've added this to Infinite Campus, it's monumental, and it will make a difference this legislative session. I absolutely believe that. So again, thank you for all of the work that your team has put into this because as a teacher who's used Infinite Campus, I know that it is not the easiest system all the time. So I know you guys put a lot of work into this, and I just wanted to congratulate you on that. Thank you.
Okay, well, it is great to hear all of the nice feedback. This is an area that I know we all believe very much in, and we recognize the value that it has for our kids. I would be remiss, being in my previous position, if I didn't take just a minor point of privilege to recognize one of our leaders and one of the people in our school district that does so much work behind the scenes and is there for us anytime we need it. I would just like to offer a thank you because I know that Kyle Kemp thought about this last year and said, I've got a great idea, and together you all made it happen. Kyle, I also wanted to just recognize you for your leadership.
Yeah, he's kind of the brains behind the operation and my numbers guy. So yes, we love Kyle. And I also, oh, I'm sorry, you wanted to...
Sorry. Thank you, President Smith. Sorry, ladies, but I'm looking at these numbers, and it says students, 1,255, 1,200 students, 834 students. But I'm looking at this, and to me, that's 1,255 relationships, 1,200 shared experiences, 834 people that the students can lean on and find support with, talk to, 810 possible mentoring each other. I mean, it's just going on, the positive building of this. So it's not just the students, it's the environment that this is creating for students. And this is things that it's going to go on into their career the rest of their life, these experiences and friendships that they're making and sharing. I just think it's amazing. I think it's absolutely amazing.
Yeah, you're referring to this slide, correct? Yeah, this was just another Kyle Kemp shout out. Just a way for us to bucket, because there are so many, like you're saying, they name them all different things. And so this is a way for us to bucket them together, just another way to look at it. Because right now, we have 333 different kinds of clubs, and like it says, there are 730 students participating, more than one. Yeah, but again, we want more kids involved in stuff. So hopefully those buckets grow bigger and bigger and bigger. So that's definitely the goal. And another shout out to Dr. Laura Davidson about getting more questions in the climate survey for students around this. And 86% of kids are saying that they do have things in their schools that they can be a part of. The number we want to grow is that 55%. Those are the ones saying that they're actually doing something. So again, that's where we want to be asking schools, like what are we doing? You know, how can we be creating more things for people to be a part of? So growth, definitely, but a lot of hard work this year on this, and we're super excited about where we're going as well. And that's all from me, so.
Well, this is between the kids and her. I feel like I should just leave. Superintendent Ernst and President Smith, nice to see you, and all of the trustees, nice to see you all again. Trish Schaefer, for the record. And just building on that momentum, one of the things that I have the privilege of championing, and I could fill a room with the collaborative partners that are helping us on this goal, so I just want to underscore that. But we are working on those fifth grade success plans. So one of my favorite clubs that I heard about recently is the Hand Bell Club at elementary school. And one of the questions we asked some of the schools we're working for is how do you take fifth graders who are in Hand Bell Club and get them involved in sixth grade Hand Bell Club? Like, what does that look like? So part of this fifth grade success plan is to keep that momentum going, right? We want the kids to discover their passion, and though we might not have a Hand Bell Club at middle school, we can get them involved in choir, or band, or other types of opportunities. And the goal here really came about because I just want to refresh your memory that what we do know is those critical transition years, kindergarten, five, six, and then eight, nine, we do see some drops in our student outcomes. And I know you guys had the opportunity to hear about our freshman plan and those post-secondary plans, and this dovetails right into that. Because we do know when our babies transition, we see an increase in absenteeism, we see a disconnect into the schools, which is part of what we're trying to mitigate here. But this really allows us to be intentional around how we are supporting our students and families. I don't know if you are a parent and have ever sent a child to middle school. It is one of the most terrifying acts you can ever, here is white knuckling it the whole time, right? And so how can we help our families help their students move forward? So what we're doing right now is looking at, we have Duncan, Cannon, and Trainer, huge shout out to them, and they have been putting in a lot of time with us to look at what does a fifth grade transition plan mean, and how can we bring that to fruition district-wide? We have a ton of collaborative partners, as I mentioned. Student Voice is a huge part of this, clubs and activities, assessment, counseling, curriculum and instruction. Almost every department in the district, along with the schools and students and families, have participated. So our schools, along with these other professionals and our students, our goal is to have guidelines that we can roll out district-wide next school year. Part of that will include our student-led conferences and goal setting. And I again want to attribute Dr. Davidson and Kyle Kemp for helping us with our data components. When we think about why we're going to focus on goal setting with our students, why we're going to focus in on student-led conferences, we know that less than half of our sixth graders feel like it's easy for them to set and achieve goals for themselves at this juncture, and only 60% feel like they know how to follow the steps to actually accomplish the goal. And so we have some protocols through social and emotional learning and through iReady where we are teaching our students how to set and achieve goals, both academically and personally. So they might want to start a Hand Bell Club in middle school, right, when they go through? So what are the steps that they need to do that? And so we've been working on this with those three schools in particular and some other schools. And I'm happy to report that anecdotally, what we're seeing with those teachers who are reporting back to us, when they engage in these practices before iReady assessment junctures, we see the students' scores go up. So if they've had the iReady data chat, if they've engaged in the goal-setting protocol, we see an increase in their academic performance. And I think to me, that's the ultimate sense of student voice, right? I am owning my learning. I know where I want to go, and I know what I need to do to get there. And so we are using this combined with their academic and extracurricular activities and goals to formalize that in a new way. So that's really exciting for us, and we're actually working with curriculum and associates to help us track this in a different way, too. So very exciting about that. And then the unsung hero that is not here is Delisa Crane over at Family School Partnerships, just a phenomenal woman. And she has done so much when I talked about these fifth grade success plans, and also really looking at that kindergarten and eight, nine. She and her team have worked tirelessly to create a toolkit that is available to all of our teachers and families. They visited every middle school this year in the name of this project. They have eight focus middle schools that they're working on, and they're really working to move from a transactional experience for our students and families to transformational. And let me give you an example of that. Transactional is let's go to the school, we'll tour, and we'll play with the locks and understand how to open lockers. Transformational, what we're hearing from our families is I want to know what healthy adolescent development looks like and how I can support my child through that. I still want to see the tour, I still want to practice the locker, but with all of the things that are happening today, please teach me when I should be scared, what I should say, what does this healthy adolescent development look like in today's age? And Delisa and her team are really leading that work. So just phenomenal work out of Family School Partnerships that I wish she was here, but just great, great work to support our fifth grade success plans. Any questions for us about that? No? Yeah, we had like the best goal.
You're really, I mean, we love all the teams, but I got to say, I wouldn't want to do milestones and momentum after you. Thank you so much, ladies. Well, actually, wait, before you go, Dr. Diane Nicolet.
Thank you, and thank you for all that you do and your team. And I know these things don't happen in isolation, they're across the district. I do want to give a shout out to the activities that happen before school, during lunch, after school, and I want to thank our teachers, our administrative assistants, whomever, because I'll tell you, I think sometimes it's the adults that feel more rewarded than the kiddos sometimes, and it's such a beautiful thing to watch them work together. And thanks for what you do, all of you.
Thank you, Madam President. This is personal for me because I was a latchkey child, growing up in the projects. And I only had two communities, which was church once a week, but school was every day of the week. So I really appreciate what you guys are doing, and it means a lot to a lot of kids. Because for a lot of kids, the school environment is their community, is their social. So thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
And to kind of bring it in so that we understand, so this board, in partnership with our associations and the district, realized that we had a space to compensate all of the teachers and the professionals who were doing this work, to expand what we call slots, bringing them down to elementary school because we know that we can connect our children to our school communities through activities. And so when I see the success of what it is that you're showing us, it's really an example of how working together to elevate ideas, carrying that through our budget and our implementation, really benefits kids. And so I am so proud of everyone who had ideas from a couple years ago that brought it all forward, and everybody who's contributed along the way. This success is the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow, to use a St. Patrick's Day analogy. And it's just wonderful, wonderful work, and I'm so proud of everyone. So thank you. Thank you. All right, team, it is 3:52. Let's go ahead and take a 15-minute break, and then we will reconvene at around, we'll say roughly 4:10-ish or so, okay? Recession.
All right, folks, we're going to start moseying on over. Moseying on over. All right, everybody, let's bring it back in. Bring it back in. It is 4:11 PM on this Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. And I would like to call back to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Right before this break, we just finished with item 3.04. We had previously already heard the item 3.05, which means now we will open item 3.06. Presentation and Discussion History, Current Workload, Scope and Schedule, the Zoning Advisory Committee and Possible Action Pursuant to Board Policy 9071-BI-2, to request that the superintendent return to the board with an amendment to Board Policy 7105, requiring that the zoning advisory committee consider any revision to school attendance zones two years prior to the proposed revision becoming effective. Uh, becoming effective. Hmm. For possible, this is an item for possible action. And we have as our presenter, our Chief Operating Officer, Adam Seersey. And we also have some additional guests in the audience. We have our Chair of the Zoning Advisory Committee, Tyler Rogers, as well. Thank you so much, Chair Seersey, or Chief Seersey. And before you get started, just a little bit of a background on how this item came to be. So this was a trustee request. We had a first and a second by trustee Hall and Vice President Mayberry. And before we embark on this presentation, I wanted to give trustee Hall a moment to explain the thought process for the request for the item.
Thank you, President Smith. So I believe it was exactly a month ago, we had another presentation about all of the movement that we're doing with the facility modernization plan. And I did bring up the idea of making sure that we're including zoning advisory and potentially school naming. I know we're just talking about zoning right now. And my history on the zoning advisory committee, I think, helped me to kind of come to this idea that it's worth having a conversation about. In looking at our strategic goal of safety and belonging and that every student, and as we just heard in that, that previous item, it's also about every family feeling valued and welcomed within that safe and supportive school environment.
So that was kind of my my background on why I I asked for us to to have this. I also know that zoning is complicated and involves a lot of data and varying numbers of people, and it depends on where somebody moves and all of that. There's a lot that goes into it, so it seems like a really good opportunity to bring Mr. Cersei here, have that conversation, and go from there.
Very well, thank you all for the intro. President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, Board of Trustees, for the record, my name is Adam Cersei. I'm the chief operating officer, and I've had the pleasure of serving in some form or fashion as a liaison or staff representative to the zoning advisory committee as long as I've worked here, as long as it's really existed since about twenty seventeen. So this is a a fun trip down memory lane. I'm gonna spend a little bit of time talking about the mechanics of the zoning advisory committee. If our former zoning advisory committee members will humor me, others may be as familiar or active in this process. But I'll go through some of this quickly. Uh, there's a there's a board policy and administrative regulation regarding the committee and kind of the practices of enrollment rezoning nationally. Public school enrollment boundaries have a long history of laws and precedent behind it. But on really the local level, there's a lot of discretion afforded to the school boards. And and really, it was a relatively ad hoc process through which it was administered for many, many decades only upon the passage of W C one and right around that same timeframe that the committee as we know it today was established. So that committee looks in many ways like many of our advisory committees to the Board of Trustees with a prescribed membership, thirteen members, all volunteer citizens from throughout our community, no um, pointed elected officials, that type of thing. They they all meet in public forums, and their actions uh, come to the board for confirmation in the form of a recommendation only the board can approve change associated with this work. These meetings also somewhat uniquely often take place inside of our schools and within our communities. It's proven very valuable. It's also a point at which I wanted to highlight the many people uh, within the district and even within our schools who help make that possible. It's considerably more labor intensive, but it again has proven very valuable to help really engage the communities and and draw out the input that makes this work much more valuable. So through these meetings, really, that's where the the real hard work is done. These meetings are not one and done. They often take a handful or more of potential rezoning scenarios and analyze each of them in detail and machinate over this option and this hybrid option and back and forth over the series of usually two or three meetings. Um, the content, as trustee Hall described, is often quite technical in nature. Um, I'll get into some more detail about that, but it is also very balanced with qualitative input, human input, community feedback, emotion associated with testimony on why this neighborhood really is more connected to that neighborhood, even though it might not appear that way on a map, things of that nature, really create a richness behind the outcomes that's been valuable.
Chief Cersei, back on that other one. Something that I'd like to share with the colleagues and to the community is that another practice of the zoning advisory committee is that the first time an item is heard, it's always there for discussion and not for potential action, which is a way that the committee also signals to the community that they're entering into a discussion with the communities, rather than potentially rushing to any action as well, too. So this committee does a really great job with pulling in those voices.
Thank you, yeah, they definitely roll up their sleeves and and dive all the way into these conversations. Ultimately, this has allowed the school district to navigate a tremendous amount of change across really the entire breadth of the district over the last seven or eight years with relatively high degrees of success. Um, I I think the the point I want to emphasize here, and I can attest to this, having developed most or many co-developed the rec staff recommendations these meetings, is that rarely, if ever, have we actually proceeded to the board with a final recommendation that looked the same as what staff brought forward in the first place. To me, that is a sign of a healthy process, and that's that's something that we have achieved. And I say we very intentionally, right? Just to clarify for the record, trustee Hall and trustee Smith have both sat and chaired that committee over the years, as have many, many other school district employees, folks that are here in the audience and other community members. Many staff, uh, school district staff go in to help and make these possible. It is very important work, challenging for our community, and and we've, I think, met that challenge with the appropriate level of in investment. You know, this is something we take very seriously. I also think it's important to reflect on the work that we've done. Um, these are just a couple of highlights. It was not very long ago when we had multi-track year-round schools. Today, with the sole unique exception of Mount Rose Elementary School, K eight has kind of some, a lot of uniqueness to it, no schools are listed as having been being overcrowded, over a hundred percent of enrollment. It was not that long ago when we only had seventh and eighth middle schools. That change was a tertiary effect of the work of the zoning advisory committee, but it's one that uh, has is now district-wide, and it's proven valuable as as well. It wasn't that long ago when you had just a hodgepodge of feeders. I won't go into detail, but that's what it used to look like with elementary schools splitting cohorts of children two and three different ways upon matriculating into middle school that we've uh, made tremendous progress in improving that those relationships. And then just getting through all of this change with our community, I mean, was not a foregone conclusion. So I think pausing and recognizing some of the success as a result of all this work is is noteworthy. Uh, all in preparation for these happy moments. Nine new schools over five consecutive calendar years, we opened, all of which, with the exception of O'Brien, uh, involved significant enrollment boundary adjustments and this exact process that I just described, and a couple more, uh, still to come, listed there on the bottom. But before these happy moments and our kids get to walk through our schools, um, a lot of forecasting needs to take place. So I'm gonna spend a little bit of time, two slides here, but a little bit of discussion on how district staff go about even forecasting the needs for perhaps a new school or even a consolidation or repurposing of other schools. High level, um, you know, I want to talk about really what we have and how we approach these forecasts. Um, classrooms, of course, how many classrooms do we have? What buildings are do we have? It's not as straightforward as it might look. There are unique classrooms that change from time to time. And then we calculate the capacity of those classrooms. They're not all identical in size, and what we put into those classrooms affects the rated capacity of those schools. Certain programs, certain grade levels, all carry, uh, unique constraints in terms of like the total number of students that can be in those classrooms. It's always important for the record for us to clarify that the portable classrooms or the classrooms within our portables on our campuses are not considered as a part of our maximum capacities in our schools. And there's also an important dimension related to utilization. We talk usually in terms of maximum capacity of a school. Um, but oftentimes, you know, where there might be a maximum capacity of twenty-five students in a classroom, perhaps only twenty-one are actually in that class. And so on paper, there's room for three more, but in practice, uh, that classroom's a hundred percent utilized. So we are continuously working with our principals, with our directors, to understand exactly what programs are where, because this classroom could be a third-grade classroom this year, it could be a fifth-grade classroom in that in a future year, it could be a special ed program in one year, it could be a general ed program in a different year, and that impacts the rated capacity of these schools. We do our best to keep a precise, uh, level of understanding of that while also allowing for a margin of error, you know, and a degree of flexibility in the work that we do. Speaking of margin of error, now we talk about predicting the future. We work really hard on this, I'm gonna tell you a little bit more about it in the next couple of slides. Um, we can do pretty well, um, within a year into the future. This is the type of work that happens immediately on count day, you know, in the fall. We know how many students actually did enroll, and we are immediately translating that into next year's allocations, informing the business office, which then translates into our principals and begins the hiring process for the next school year. Um, as soon as you start to go further into the future, it should come as no surprise that the margin of error, the degree of expected accuracy decreases each year we go out. I wanted to highlight that because often we don't, I think, do ourselves, we do ourselves a disservice by talking of uh, enrollment projections three and five years into the future in terms of specific numbers, um, when in fact, there should be more of a range expressed around those projections. Anyway, those are fundamental aspects of how we go about predicting or projecting the work that we need to do, whether, again, we need a new school, or we need to consolidate schools, or things of that nature. There is a lot baked into the bullet points on this slide, but basically, the first step is looking at the students that we have, our existing students, and rolling them up. It's as simple as matriculating first graders to second, fifth graders to sixth, and understanding how many seniors we have rolling off of our roles. But we take this to an extreme extreme level. Every grade level at every school has an empirically divide devised matriculation ratio. So historically, at Anderson Elementary School, how many fourth graders turn into fifth graders? However, that ratio is typically different than fourth graders to fifth graders at Van Gorder or Donner Springs. You know, it's generally a function of just the, uh, the the transienture, the permanence of the residences within that zone. But we track it on a grade level by school, and that's how we establish the baseline. We know how many students we have, we roll them up, this is where we're starting from. Obviously, then, we don't have, uh, anybody to roll up into kindergarten. So the next step really involves birth rates and how many students we might expect to come into kindergarten. For that, we look into the past and look at actual births to Washoe County resident mothers from five years prior. We look at those numbers, and that's what's depicted on that graphic. And we also have an empirical ratio year over year of how many of those births tend to turn into kindergartners, because it's not a hundred percent, you know? Uh, ninety percent, eighty percent, seventy percent turn into those kindergartners. And that's our way of using the past to inform the future as we do our best to predict next year's kindergarten class enrollment. Layering onto that further, so now we've got our projections for K through twelve, we then layer on in-migration or development. So that is an area where we spend a considerable amount of time working, not only with the agencies, I mean, our staff review every single development application that comes before Reno Sparks, Washoe County, whether it's, you know, Starbucks across the street from Reno High School, a master plan amendment to Stonegate Development, or a two-hundred-unit multifamily infill department. We are commenting and reviewing all of those and factoring all of them into our, uh, enrollment models. We're also working closely with the developers themselves, as well as the U N R Center for Regional Studies, who does basically the same thing as what we're doing on a population scale. So it's not just about those two-hundred-and-fifty units, and it's been approved, or when it's gonna break ground, but when do we expect humans to be living in those houses? In the case of large residential, single-family subdivisions, it can literally take decades for those a thousand homes to be built and occupied. We take all of that information to the absolute best of our knowledge and rely on a variety of expert sources to then translate those residences into students. You know, everybody else in the region tracks housing units and population growth. We're the only ones who translate that into student generation rates. And we do that regionally on a, again, historical empirical basis, saying historically, out of every one hundred homes in this area and of this building type, we see fifteen elementary school students, seven middle school students, and twelve high school students, something like that. And then, uh, that that is also regionally calculated because the number of students per capita, so to speak, in southeast Reno, for example, where there's a significantly higher median home price than said, or Sun Valley, you'll see a difference in student generation rates per capita. These are the types of things, so we know if a new residential development is planned in this area, when we expect those homes to be occupied, and approximately students we expect to be generated or, um, enrolled in our schools as a result. Um, last but not least, we try to factor in other variables to the greatest degree possible related to exits, um, whether it's tracking trends related to transfers or dropouts for a variety of reasons, and most notably, I put on here, um, non-W C S D, uh, school options, specifically because that's become an ever-increasing, uh, variable in our projections. Uh, over the last decade, um, triple, uh, an increase by three times in the amount of students in Washoe County enrolled in, uh, charter schools, and that comes with a unique level of, uh, unpredictability or lack of awareness. So we do our best to track and incorporate that, but, um, those changes can occur on a relatively short timeline. All of that gets layered over it, the fact that we're talking about predicting human behavior. So I just gotta throw that asterisk on there because, uh, predicting the weather's hard enough, but predicting exactly how humans are gonna behave is just extra interesting and challenging. But I think the point of this is just to help inform all of you and the public as to the level of care and diligence that we put into this, as well as, you know, the the level of the margin of error, the the reasonable level of precision with which it can be done.
Chief Cersei, before you move on from this, I want to say thank you. I know that these slides were in addition just the other day, and they really have added an important depth of understanding to how the committee works and the information that's coming out of the district. So thank you so much for for bringing this forward and enhancing the conversation with this data.
Oh, my pleasure, thank you.
I can't help but ask myself when I'm driving around and I'm seeing all the the mulkses, have we taken a different approach to projections in how many families with young children coming to our enrolling in our schools, how that may change? How would you even assess that, given the cost of living? Single-family homes being very expensive, maybe a two-bedroom apartment being more affordable? How do you look at that?
So in addition to tracking, uh, these birth rates, so this graphic, I I'm sorry to make you squint at it, um, but it's it's really just a jaw-dropping statistic that the total number of births in Washoe County uh, in twenty-twenty-three is roughly equivalent to the total number of births in Washoe County in two thousand and three, despite the fact that the total population has increased by almost two hundred thousand over the meantime. It really, that it translates into that birth rate. There are just fewer, uh, babies being born in our community for a variety of reasons. You know, cost of living, uh, you know, scarce, and this is a national trend. This is not something that's unique to Reno, but tracking that reality, and then, I think, more to your answer your question, it it really is that annual empirical trend update that we're looking at. Hey, regionally, what is the current student generation per capita?
enrolling in our schools, how that may change? How would you even assess that, given the cost of living, single family homes being very expensive, maybe a two bedroom apartment being more affordable? How do you look at that?
So in addition to tracking these birth rates, so this graphic, I I'm sorry to make you squint at it, but it's it's really just a jaw dropping statistic that the total number of births in Washoe County in twenty twenty three is roughly equivalent to the total number of births in Washoe County in two thousand and three, despite the fact that the total population has increased by almost two hundred thousand over the meantime. It really, that it translates into that birth rate. There are just fewer babies being born in our community for a variety of reasons. You know, cost of living, you know, scarce, and this is a national trend. This is not something that's unique to Reno, but tracking that reality. And then I think more to your answer your question, it it really is that annual empirical trend update that we're looking at, hey, regionally, what is the current student generation per capita in this area in multifamily units, in single family units, et cetera? And how does this updated data point change our trend? You know, so we we try in that instance to allow historical actuals to influence our projections and not put our finger on the scale otherwise, you know? Try not to speculate. Allow that empirical trend line and the combination of variables to inform our prediction and try not to, you know, speculate very much. Okay, so another fairly dense slide that I wanted to try to communicate some nuance on is here, slide ten. Talking about timelines, you know, when we conduct these projections and do this work, it takes many years to develop a a school of any scale. So we're looking upwards of five years into the future on the needs, the potential needs, programming those needs into our financial documents, our capital improvement program and whatnot. And it's really, you know, during that time that some of those big risk factors are teased out, you know? Hey, is this going to fit? Are there some other zoning or other constraints that would preclude us from doing this? Do we need to make significant modifications to our plan? It's it's very high level, but the need has been identified, and we are beginning to consciously work towards a project during that period of time. You know, once, once the timeline nears and as the project perhaps does continue to affirm its need, the projections continue to indicate, yes, we do need a new school or some change or project here. You know, then we're going to hire an architect. We're going to move forward into the design phase. And even then, there is still a lot of give and take and and change behind the scenes. We talk about, you know, a school. It's got a certain size of classroom, number of classrooms, a cafeteria, a gymnasium, you know, the pieces and parts. But how we put that together on a particular site is something that does have some flexibility to it. We don't build elementary schools with a maximum capacity of three hundred students. We don't build elementary schools with a maximum capacity of a thousand students. By and large, they're between seven hundred and eight hundred and fifty student capacity, and there's some flexibility there to suit the anticipated needs of that community. These are the types of details that are really getting worked on in that two and three year time period ahead of the opening. Then really, when things kick into a higher gear, is when projects move into construction. So there's a couple of examples later in the slide deck of when we've taken projects well into the design phase, and for whatever reason circumstances have changed, to either delay or defer those projects. Once we make the decision, and when we, when I say we, I think it's important to note that likely on more than one occasion associated with each of those checkmarks up there is a vote of the Board of Trustees, whether it's to approve the funding to proceed, to approve contracts to proceed. We are continuously reevaluating and vetting, should we, how we take these steps forward, and it requires action of the Board of Trustees in some form or fashion pretty much every step of the way. But once we make the decision to move into construction, the degree of confidence and commitment on behalf of the district towards completion of this project increases tremendously. And you'll kind of see on that chart that that's when other parallel processes also kick into gear. The certainty that this project is moving forward has moved to a very high level. And so we can start talking about the rezoning process with confidence and certainty around that change. We can start talking about the impacts to staff and human human resource changes with confidence and with certainty. Those processes also take time and are historically initiated once construction has begun. I I also chose to create this graphic to help communicate the terminology that I struggled with, the one year ahead of opening with the air quotes. I think it's, it makes sense to me to say one year ahead of opening to complete the rezoning decision one year ahead of opening, whereas technically, you're looking at like fifteen months ahead of opening. We really have aspired to make that decision final and known to the public at least before the end of the school year, before the school year before the opening, penultimate. I don't know how the best way to say it, one year ahead of time, right? So that blue line there, that zero years prior to opening, the rezoning decision has been made, the staffing decisions have largely been made, and that culture and community building process can and does ensue. And those design elements, a mascot, colors, a variety of other things that are intangible to the opening of that school and the community and culture of that school are really developed during that time period when the construction is still very much underway. So when I speak in terms of one year ahead of opening or two years ahead of opening, hopefully this graphic is helpful in everyone kind of being on the same page there. So with, that's largely background to get to this type of work. So we talked about all these schools before. You won't see O'Brien on there because there was not rezoning action taken associated with that one. But all, all eight others are listed here, went back, looked at all the rezoning actions from those years past, and just kind of summarized them. You can see one year prior to opening has been more or less the most standard or most common. As I mentioned before, this work takes months typically for the committee to land even just one of these decisions in a calendar year. And this, again, one year ahead of time, has historically allowed the community to make different choices based on that impending change, as well as participate in the development of that change for an entire school year ahead of it going into effect. That's what we've seen. Also researching this notable, two of those were actually enacted two years or were approved two years ahead of opening for different reasons. But both of those required unexpected rezoning, secondary rezoning actions shortly after they were opened. Again, every project is unique, so it's a bit of an apples and oranges comparison. But I thought that was noteworthy in the interest of having this conversation and always trying to learn from our past and continuously improve. I highlighted a couple of variables there at the bottom that I briefly touched on earlier, but I want to highlight again because changes in residential development can happen very rapidly and and can significantly influence and have significantly influenced these projects. We spent millions of dollars developing an elementary school in the Stonebrook community only to hit hit pause at the at the, you know, one one yard line right before we went into construction. Stonegate, at one time, we had master planned for a new high school and two new elementary schools. Today, that project has not broken ground and is actively trying to reimagine itself as basically a non residential development. So Daybreak, also another example, we were continuously monitoring the work there. They finally begun developing homes out there, but, you know, many years beyond where they projected they would. And and today, we do not anticipate the need for as many or as large of schools as maybe we once did. Examples also on there were external variables in the permitting process, the construction market. Even charter schools, as I mentioned earlier, can come at us somewhat unexpectedly and significantly influence how we choose to proceed with our capital program. These are just the types of variables that make these enrollment projections a little more fraught. And also a bit of a, I think, add to the case that proceeding with decision making really imperil with the degree of confidence of the project is has been the practice up until this time. So just a little bit about what we're working on this school year. Both the new Sted Elementary School and the new Vaughn Middle School are slated for twenty six, twenty seven school year openings. So the zoning advisory committee tackled and met multiple times in the fall semester over the Sted Elementary School and ultimately elected to not actually take any action, I think wisely, ultimately concluding that the change possible was not of net benefit to the community as opposed to actually just leaving the enrollment boundaries the same. It's the same basic conclusion that was arrived at on O'Brien. And, you know, Sted Elementary School, as you know, is moving just a couple thousand yards as a crow flies in location. New Vaughn Middle School slated to open twenty six, twenty seven. Zoning Advisory Committee, zoning commit twice on that one, scheduled to meet again in April and hopeful to make a recommendation to the board immediately after that meeting. Lots of work going on there. Up next school year, in terms of the anticipated zoning committee workload, we're looking at two major school projects that are anticipated to open in the twenty seven, twenty eight school year, New Loader and Modernized Matthews. Both of those are anticipated to have significant enrollment boundary adjustments, potential school closures as well. And any recommendations that might come out of the committee to the board next school year would then keep with that at least one year in advance notice to the community. And then I wanted to highlight, you know, while I'm not trying to imply anything about the status of these projects, they haven't yet been authorized for construction. And there are, you know, many obstacles or variables that could change between now and then. So just, again, keeping with that sentiment of this detailed and semi permanent decisions are best made in alignment with the progression of the project. So that's really the history lesson, just a couple of key points. Again, circling back on, you know, the work that has been established is noteworthy. I think that the precedent for the future and the and the structure and relationship with the community has been valuable. That balanced timing, narrowing decisions in parallel with the project's progression has proven to be most successful. And then just continuing to work to improve and leverage the partnership with the community through the zoning advisory committee to help us all navigate this change in a way that can be perceived as an opportunity. Change is super hard. We are super respectful and compassionate when we, you know, embark on these conversations with the community. But we're we're blessed to be able to do that intentionally and infused with significant capital funds in most instances. So doing it in partnership with the community and this committee hopefully allows all of us to see this change as a potential path forward for the better. So that's kind of the history lesson. I know this was a unique agenda item in terms of the potential board policy change versus any staff recommendations. But I tried to do my best to just really tee up the conversation because this is ongoing work that is unique from project to project and some really unique expertise on the board, and I appreciate to have this conversation on the record. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. So this is an interesting one, guys. So continuing on with our trend of board policy decisions today. What we can do here is a few different things. And so the the motion that you see here is is, you know, the staff recommendation. But we're going to talk about that. So what we can do as a group, of course, is nothing, which would keep it the way that it is. But we can also discuss amongst ourselves if we would like to see an amendment or an evolution of this policy in any way. And then we would direct the superintendent to then come back with a revision to the policy in the future. So I just want everybody to know that options that we have here. So I'm going to go ahead and jump in, have a little bit of history here. I'd served on the zoning advisory committee from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty one, which is where I actually met trustee Hall. And we are embarking on a different era, if you will, in my opinion, of the WC one project and then also the facilities modernization project. So up till this point, by and large, the projects that we were building, the revitalizations, the expansions were to relieve overcrowding. And I do believe that the board policy and the practice of the committee is strong when we are building a school, revitalizing a school to address overcrowding or additional families in a community. So I actually think that the policy is great for that category of zoning. I do believe that we are in a different era of WC one and the facilities modernization plan when the schools that we are rebuilding, revitalizing, expanding are now contemplating school closures and consolidation. It is, to me, a fundamentally different era of the project. It's important. I one hundred percent stand behind what we call the F M P and what it contemplates in terms of our portfolio of schools. But I do believe that the policy originally for seventy one oh five, when it was originally contemplated along with this timeline, was addressing overcrowding. And I do believe that consolidation and closure fundamentally changes what some of the community needs are. And we're hearing that loud and clear right now because of the zoning with the closure of Pine and the reopening of Vaughn, among other things. And so I want to pause there for a moment before I continue. I don't know if trustee Hall wants to add on, but I'd like to signal, we do have our chair of the zoning advisory committee. And I have never served on the zoning advisory committee when we were also contemplating a closure or a consolidation. I do not have that lived experience, and that's something that I'm hoping we could dig into and talk about because I am a proponent, as it stands right now, to create a subsection of this policy which may contemplate a retiming when a project involves a consolidation or a closure. That's what I'm interested in in digging into, not changing the process when it's relieving overcrowding. So I'll go to trustee Hall, and then I want to signal to Chair Rogers because I'm very interested in hearing your thoughts on this from a current zoning advisory committee standards.
So I I I agree. We're in a different era when it comes to consolidation. And so some thoughts that I had that I just wanted to bring up. So some of the words in the definition of community are words like sharing common interests or term phrases, unified or joint ownership, fellowship. And so when we consolidation, these are happening in very established neighborhoods. And so I think I think the the new Pine campus is a is a really good example. We're we're talking about consolidating potentially two schools, one of those schools being across the street and one of them being a little further away. And so when I think about that, I I think about the the Echo Loader Campus as well, or the Matthews Campus. Those those campuses, they're they're already established within a neighborhood. So they already have a community. And one thing that my my concern with this is that if we if we don't signal to the community that will be consolidating within it, they will feel like an add on. And and I've heard that from several people in the Dodson specifically community, and that that's really on my heart because I know that there's a lot of the schools we're looking at consolidating might not, might be communities of people who who maybe don't know that their voice really matters in this process and don't know how to express their voice. And so in hearing that, I don't want there to be a main community that we're going to. I, you know, for example, if if we're rebuilding Echo Loader on the same campus and but we're going to consolidate another school into it, how are we making sure that that other school feels a part of of everything? But not just that school, those families, right, the community at large. And so I just want to make sure that we're very, very purposeful about that. And I do, Mr. Cersei and I have talked at length, and like I like President Smith said, we've both served on this committee, and we saw the the changes that we had to make almost immediately with Bowhatch and Hug because we we did zone them a little too in advance. And so we had to immediately do some changes. However, those were growing communities. Those were not necessarily established communities. So I do think that there is a difference. I don't know what we're going to land on here because we we have to all have this discussion. But I think those are some things that we really need to think about. We want to make sure that there is a unified or joint ownership of whatever these new school look like. And if we really don't, if we don't signal that ahead of time to that community, I'm concerned that they will always feel like they're an add on.
Yeah, I appreciate that. JJ, since timing is something that is being discussed, would it be okay to please go to the slide that has the conceptual school project timeline? Thank you so much. I appreciate that. All right, Chair Rogers, we don't have experience in this, but you're living it right now. Do you have any thoughts for us?
I doubt that. You have much experience. President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board, my name is Tyler Rogers for the record, and I have the distinct pleasure of serving as the current chair for the zoning advisory committee. I think how I can be helpful today is to provide a little bit of a report from the front lines of the zoning advisory committee, as well as sort of share some experience of recent lessons learned. I think echoing what you've heard so far, I I would report that the zoning advisory committee is working. This hypothesis, we that that are the wise folks in this room This hypothesis, we, that our, the wise folks in this room, number of years ago, set out to say, let's create a separate forum to engage the community on these difficult decisions is proving to work. I've been doing this for about two and a half years, and my observation is that that hypothesis is paying out. It is a forum of thoughtfulness that is made of diverse community members. We sort of sit between the community and staff to try to be that conduit of making a wise decision on this and giving it the time and space to make these decisions. People come to us from the community and say, I bought a house in this region. I made the biggest financial decision of my life. It's not a reason to make a zoning decision, but this is, this is a point of a lot of emotion from the community. We see a ton of community engagement. I think we deliberately go out into the community to the point of not everyone can necessarily come to us or has the space or time, and we try to go to them. It's really important, and we have the staff support in that. And I think there's been amazing collaboration with staff over my time, and so I wanna speak and sort of acknowledge that with Chief Cersei's team and beyond, as well as ZAC members. We have a great track record of attendance of ZAC committee members. Two of them are in the room right now, and more of them to your time to come and see this. I think the other thing I wanna sort of call out is the facility management modernization plan is working, and that creates zoning complications. It is, it is a good thing that WC one is happening. We are having new facilities. We have difficult decisions. That just makes it zoning more interesting and complicated. I think as this sort of conversation started, it has been about overcrowding, and now we're closing schools, and that does change things. And I think that's really important to noodle on. Things that we have to grapple with on ZAC are, how do we deal with facility utilization? Adam's team brings a bunch of data. We call them brush fire charts. They've historically been red and yellow because we're dealing with overcrowding. Now it's not as brush fiery, and so it is a different topic. We deal with projected growth. We look at maps. We have to understand where streets are, where goalies are. We deal with staff recommendations. We have public input that comes in, and there are missing voices from that public input because not everyone can invest time to come to a meeting of ours. We deal with transportation topics. We think about historical rezoning. If community was rezoned a year ago, we have to factor that in. We also think about what's gonna happen in this school. What is the programming gonna be? If we have eight hundred students in a space, what do the electives look like? These are the types of things that we have to noodle on and consider. And there is a lot of emotions. This isn't, people have generational investments in how, what high school they go to, and they surface that, and we have to sit and sort of be in between them. So I think the school closing thing we've talked about, I think, is a newer element, and I'm glad that we're talking about it today. I think what I'll close with is just two recent lessons learned that I've observed with the ZAC. The first is that the community does have questions about building size and decisions made during design. This has come up specifically in our recent one with Vaughn. And so I think the point is that we collectively need a way to get this info out and considered as part of decisions of design. Community is asking for this information. They're asking, why was that decision made and how? I think we've heard from Chief Cersei's team that there's a ton of things happening around that design decision. The community is hungry for that information. That can get out into the community before it gets to ZAC because we are dealing with questions of why. And I think the last bit is that, like, there needs to be more thoughtful timing on decisions around these elements, especially given school choice. You know, families are want to know how these impacts are gonna, how these decisions will impact their decisions and align that to the school choice window. But I will also say that nimbleness matters. We may need a year, we may need two years, we may need fifteen months. Like, having flexibility on ZAC as well as how we work with staff of how we want to align these things is valuable. And I think that that has proven effective is when the ZAC committee can work closely with staff to align this stuff. And I think that's a specific lesson learned of what's happening with Vaughn right now is that I personally wish we'd sort of looked at that earlier in the year, knowing these school choice elements. And I think that can happen, just been closer collaboration and sort of having lived through this, of giving us that nimbleness. Thank you, and I'm happy to sort of answer other questions.
That was great. Thank you so much. I have a question, but I'll go to trustee Hall.
I just wanted to give Chair Rogers a big shout out. So when he became my vice chair, the first thing that he said is, we need more voices. And so he and I spent a lot of time going to PTA meetings, PTO meetings, as well as meeting with every single principal impacted. And so you were definitely the right choice for the chair, but it's very clear with what you just shared with us. So I just wanna shout out that voice has always been really, really important to the zoning advisory committee, but you've taken it to the next level. And I truly appreciate that because I know that this last decision with rezoning Vaughn and all of the things that are going into it, I know you guys are getting a lot of community feedback, but I know that you've also, you've welcomed that. And so I really, really appreciate all of your points of view. So I just wanted to give you a shout out.
So the reason why I asked for this slide to come up is it has to design of this school. So again, I am a supporter of the one year ahead of the opening when we're dealing with overcrowding. What I'm curious about maybe from staff is how are we designing or anticipating the size of a school when we know that there's a consolidation, but we don't actually know who we're putting in the schools? And so not to load the question, just so that I'm thinking out loud, I do believe, and I'd like to hear my colleagues' thoughts on exclusively when a project involves the closure or a consolidation of another school, I am a proponent of moving it up another school year. That way, the zoning decisions and the conversations are happening with the community earlier, potentially a decision is made two years in advance, which is still within the design of the school. Could that allow for a better sizing or scoping of the school? Now, a school's being designed and planned, but we don't technically know who's going to it. Is that, okay, I'll ask it more like a question because I realize, I know, I did what I've also seen other people do, and it drove me nuts then, so I will fix that. I will make that adjustment. Can you please share how a school is designed and planned for size when it includes a consolidation, but the board has not decided who's gonna go to school there? So like, a good example would be how Vaughn, for example, that's the only one we have. The next project will be the elementary school that is planned to be built on Pine. How is that, how does that design work when it's not entirely certain who's going there?
Sure, got it. So in a nutshell, largely the same way that we approach the design for a school, a new school, where we don't know exactly who's going to attend it either. You know, I mentioned, we don't build three hundred student capacity elementary schools. We don't build a thousand student capacity. We generally have a range of healthy enrollment levels that are both optimal for the students and staff within that building, sort of not too, not too large, not too small, that also provide us optimal efficiencies of resources, both in terms of our allocations and our school and our school operations. You know, currently, our standard elementary school is about seven hundred student capacity. Middle school is about twelve hundred student capacity. High school is about two thousand. You know, obviously, Proctor Hug was the first of its design type. However, those standard designs have a degree of variability to them. So the total number of classrooms and the rated max capacity at, say, for example, Polakitis is slightly different than what is being planned at Stead, is slightly different than what is being planned at Loader, not by hundreds of students, but by two and four classrooms, either subtracting or adding based on, to some degree of planning assumptions, like what I described here, the probable maximum student body sizes, right? It's, you know, gonna be a little bit smaller likely, or maybe a little bit larger. And we're gonna err on the side of having more permanent capacity than less, so as to avoid, you know, coming into a bind. But, you know, in the case of Vaughn, in the case of Pine, in the case of Matthews, there are some assumptions made as to the existing and future enrollments, just as in the case of Polakitis or Enskeep or Bowhatch, there are some assumptions made as to the future enrollments. And those assumptions are then applied upon design standards and guidelines that generally follow what I just described. Minor adjustments are made, and then that die is cast, and we work through the zoning committee to fill in the details, you know, because there's a certain, highly likely enrollment zone, and then there's options on the periphery that can move the needle somewhat significantly, but all are possible solutions, none of which are right or wrong. So we're designing the school that fits really the future reality and then working to fill it in a way that's, you know, appropriate for the school as well as appropriate for that community.
So a follow-up question to that. So in the, in the areas for consolidation, because these are typically, you know, they're already established areas, has that, has that looked different so far? And Vaughn and Stead would be the, and maybe even O'Brien back when we did that, we kind of already, those were established, although Stead and O'Brien, that's still a growing area. So maybe this, maybe this Vaughn move, has that looked different in, maybe in the demand forecasting, so I think it was two slides back, where you, where you do all of the different human behavior, all of these things? Has that looked different in, in this situation where you already have really established neighborhoods compared to a growing area like when we rezoned for Spanish Springs?
You know, we, like I described, we work really hard to have the most current historical data that will inform enrollment projections for that school, and we do not put our finger on the scale. We do not say, well, you know, Vaughn is more desirable or less desirable. That's a level of subjectivity that's just really a slippery slope. We play this straight up based on data and facts, and we use the same process to project the future enrollment at Vaughn as we do at Stead, as we do at Polakitis. And we bake in the appropriate, you know, degree of flexibility, knowing that the exact zoning boundaries might differ from what we originally assume, that the human behavior might actually differ from historical human behaviors, all the above. But, you know, this is an appropriately sized middle school with the appropriate pieces and parts that is informed by our best-known projections, and then we work within those constraints as we move forward.
All right, that seems like a good stopping point for public comment, if we have any, JJ.
Pablo Navaduran.
Welcome, Mr. Navaduran.
Hello, guys. My name is Pablo. I'm from Neo World Community. So Muslim community, not just Neo World Community, but all community, Dona Smeen, Dawson, Hind Valley, and Hafaker Community are concerned about rezoning to Vaughn and Wooster because of, because of student behavior and a culture at Vaughn-Wooster. But, but I want to speak mine about the declining enrollment at Vaughn because all the option of Vaughn, if local zoning community, because no matter what they put their reason to Vaughn, they're gonna decline by sixty percent for next ten years. So we have to think about it. And also for Wooster, also declining as well. So if Adam seriously, his team decides to rebuild Wooster, I think that we could consider a constant continuation with Spark High School, I mean, close it down Spark High School and bring it into new Wooster High School as well. So you have to think about in the near future. You know, it doesn't make sense that if we rebuild Wooster, the tiny twenty-two thousand capacity is just like Huck, New Huck High School campus, and we could rezon them, so especially in Dona Smeen, Dawson, Hind Valley to new Wooster High School. And then Damani Ranch and Huck, Galena High School have trouble trying to have elective at PAC program, STEM programs, because look at Galena High School years ago, they lose a lot of elective class, and Damani about to lose elective class as well. If lucky, they're gonna lose some elective in the near future if a new Wooster High School could be re, especially in Dona Smeen, rezoned to new Wooster High School. So you have to think about it because if we rebuild Wooster High School, what the under utilized Damani and Galena look like? So that's, that might two cents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navaduran. I'm Vice President Mayberry.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I, you know, it's great discussion, and I appreciate, appreciate Christine Hall and President Smith bringing this forward. You know, my, my district is the at-large district, so I, I overlap a lot of, a lot of these areas as well. And, you know, I went on a field trip and tried to get some of my own feedback and didn't necessarily align with exactly what President Smith and trustee Hall have brought up. That's not to suggest that it's not there, they're just maybe better connected than I am. I, I'm wondering if, and maybe this is more of a question to my colleagues, if this situation is, given sort of the urban nature and the older neighborhoods that this school is, if it's more of an anomaly, and that maybe we, you know, maybe we should focus more on, on this zoning project as opposed to changing the policy? I, I just, I don't know, I, my sense is, you know, maybe trying, I'm just a little concerned that if we do too, that if we change the policy in a, too radically, it could have some detrimental effects going forward. So just a high-level thought, so to try to summarize my thought process, is this, is this sort of an anomaly what we're looking at now? Or do, because I don't have the facility modernization plan in front of me right now. I mean, would we see similar projects, similar zoning projects like this in the future in terms of the consolidation of schools?
The, the process of modernizing and reconstructing and consolidating schools is suggested in detail and in general, generality in the FMP for many years to come.
Okay, thank you.
It is, and so I'm gonna chime in on that because I am already hearing about the zoning for the new elementary school that's gonna be built on the place of Pine Middle School. I am already hearing from families that are saying, who's gonna go to that school? And they're excited. This is a good thing. They are excited to have a brand-new school. We are lucky through WC one to have tremendous trade-up opportunities to offer our more established neighborhoods new schools that are on par with the beautiful schools that we're building in our high-growth areas. But I will tell you right now that I am already hearing from those families saying whose schools may be considered for consolidation and saying, when will we find out if we're actually going to this school? You guys are starting to design this school. We want to know where we're going. And so I am already hearing about it from families for future projects, not even related to Vaughn. And so to me, that shows a pattern of community interest and need that's outside of one episodic situation. Before I go to you, trustee Hall, because we've been doing a lot of talking, I'd like to go to Dr. Nicolet.
Thank you. I think it also shows that Washoe County School District team has done an excellent job of being forthcoming with information. Although, you know, the question of where, when, and how, and why, they're fair and important questions, and sometimes we have to be patient. I am of a mind, I agree with my colleague, trustee Mayberry, that rather than change the policy, there can always be a mechanism, maybe during the planning time, because we know certain variables and information, and we feel that they're solid. We can start having those conversations when we're ready to. And that's why I think it's really important that we're cognizant about the flexibility and ready to provide accurate information rather than telling people where you're going and do the oops, which can happen. Things change. We know that. You gave a wonderful historical information about that. So I'm not of a mind to change the policy, but I do hear trustee Hall and the concern about, people do get anxious. And I think maybe if we just increase our communication, I'm not sure what that looks like, just increase our, make more opportunities to have discussion, those listening tours, if you will, rather than mess with the policy. Thank you.
Well, to be clear, the policy doesn't actually say one year in advance. This is a practice, not a policy team. So the policy doesn't actually say anything. The zoning advisory committee has been doing this by practice. It's not in policy.
And to that, thank you, thank you for the clarification. I don't think it should be. I think that could be dangerous, just my, my two cents.
So the way that we would handle this is the zoning advisory committee is So the way that we would handle this is the zoning advisory committee is a committee of the board. And I'll be really clear. I think having them make these decisions one year in advance is, is not far enough when we deal with consolidations and closures. I'm hearing this universally across the board. So in this case, we're not actually changing a policy. This is a historic practice and this is our committee. It is our process and we do get to direct when it happens. Now, there are options where we could activate the committee in advance. But that's what we're talking about right now. And to be really clear, a lot of these projects are in District D and I'm hearing it very, very loud and clear that communities want to know where they're going when there's a school closure and consolidation involved with that. Trustee Westlake and then Hall.
Thank you, President Smith. So in the, um, the agenda item, it's saying, consider any revision to school attendance zones two years prior. But then in the motion, it's saying one year. So, I, I mean, what are we doing?
Well, I will tell you, my opinion is, is that zoning, that there should be zoning boundary decisions two years beforehand when there's a school closure or consolidation. But I don't understand. So the motion was created by staff. It's not necessarily, like, we can have any motion we want. That's a recommended motion. But it's not like anybody here created that motion.
Okay, that was just a little confusing. And then, I, I mean, I was just going to throw out, because I think it's a good idea to start getting your ducks in a row as soon as you can. That doesn't mean that you don't change the lineup when you get closer to the end date. Having something where the process is started two years in advance so that we make sure we're getting the word out to the community. We're having discussions and our communication is on point, letting everybody know when these meetings are. We're going to be discussing, you know, the closure of this school or the reopening of this school. But then I, I, I would, myself, I would like something where it's looked at a year, then it's looked at a year and we make sure all of our data and our numbers and everything's adding up so that we're still on point. Because things can change in six months, a year. So I just, I like that safety net of reevaluating at a year. But I think for communication purposes, it should start two years. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the, the process does start two years in advance because it takes the zoning advisory committee several, several months to go through this process. And so I think, I think where, where we're kind of all, all talking about is we want to make sure we're communicating with the, with the communities, which is happening. But then their, but then their question is, okay, so I'm getting this letter sent home or I'm being told that this school is being built. But am I going to be one of the families who goes to that school? Or am I going to be rezoned to another school? Because I'm being told my school is closing. And if my child just started kindergarten, I want to know where they're going to be in third grade. And, and I think that that is really important. And again, I just want to emphasize, if, if the, the school is being built on one campus and, and I really, really appreciate Adam and you're, you're for changing the language and saying it's on the Echo Loader Campus or it's on the Pine Campus. But it's still being called that. And so those families that are going to be coming into that school, I, I think we, we still really need to be very mindful that these families need to feel a sense of belonging. It's one of our pillars, so that's really important. And so zoning is already starting two years in advance anyway. We're already doing that. But it's about the decision being made so that these families have time to make decisions for their family. And I understand there's a margin of error. I, I'm, I'm very aware of that because I lived through the Spanish Springs zoning last, last spring and we got a lot of feedback, like, hey, you just did this. Adam came to a couple of meetings with me so that we could hear that feedback together. And there were families frustrated. There, there's always going to be families frustrated during zoning decisions because it is deeply, deeply personal. My own family has been rezoned. We were one of the ones that was in a year-round school. And it was hard. It's very hard. But it's, if you are still wondering as this school's being built and there's decisions being made and you're unsure if you're going to be part of that community, I think that's a problem. And I really, really believe that we need, simply just on the consolidation piece, I'm not talking about new schools for new overcrowding in the future or, you know, like, for example, the Stead situation, that, that's different. But in the consolidation, if we are going to build a community, it is important that that community be defined well in advance. And so I, I really believe, we're already starting it two years in advance. But this, this conversation is signaling that when we are going to do a consolidation, that during the design phase, that the zoning is happening simultaneously. That's what needs to happen. They need to know that those conversations are happening and that they get to be a part of that design. They get to be, and, and the, the, all the other stuff, the colors, the mascot and stuff. Once the principals hired the year before, which is a district policy and we're not, we're not asking for that to be changed. But the process in, as it's, as it's starting to happen, those families need to know that that's where they're going to be zoned for. Because it is a huge difference. This is going from some of our schools being walk zones to being bust. This is schools that have been there for decades. And families have been, that they've been in that neighborhood for decades. It's been part of that community for decades. And we're making big changes and they're great. People are excited about it, no doubt. I mean, I, I, our new schools are incredible facilities for learning. But they need to know what facility they're going to be going to. So I really believe that we need to, to be very clear that, that, that two years in advance, that the zoning advisory committee needs to be started in that process whenever there's a consolidation.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the rich dialogue and I think it's really important as we're embarking on the next phase of our FMP. Mr. Rogers, thanks for being the chair. Appreciate you being here tonight, offering your insights. Mr. Circe, appreciate the history lesson. I think, um, history does inform us pretty well. And I think it's often something that we want to refer to when making critical decisions that create flexibilities in the future. And as I think I've participated in different discussions, you're trying to find the sweet spot of this. And, uh, as Trustee Hall mentioned, uh, having been involved in rezoning plenty of times throughout my career, um, there, it's a significant impact for our families. And so we want to be as fair as possible. And it's a significant impact on staff. And as we're working, as you are all deliberating, because there was questions about the mismatch between two years and one year. You can see that the staff recommendation that came from us is one year. There's a desire for the two-year. So we're trying to, I think, find the sweet spot between those two. And I think we're also learning some things right now about exodus of staff when we see announcements well in advance. And so, you know, there's the family side that's, that's critically important and really should, should drive, um, much of our consideration. And I think we're also learning right now ourselves as we go that we're, we're, we're seeing some maybe impacts to school staff by announcing in advance. And staff now moving away from those schools and maybe not even being able to staff those schools in the ways that we want to in that final year. And so I, I, I offer that because I think you're all in very rich discussion and I appreciate where everybody's coming from. And I think it is, you know, as I've described to you, maybe the Goldilocks effect. You're trying to find the right spot. And so for clarification in regards to the recommendation that the staff did bring forward, we did bring forward the one year based on the desire of the two-year. And so I appreciate the comments. I appreciate everything. But I'll offer that perspective as you are all deliberating on a possible policy or possible other ways of going about at trying to get at some of the intentions that are being described here. So I'll leave that with the board.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that. Oh, I see both your lights on. I really appreciate that because, you know, staff is of course, a very important part of this. With that said, the FMP has laid out a roadmap. Um, and I'm going to jump ahead, guys. This work is really happening incredibly in my district, in District D, which I share of course with Dr. Nicolette and Vice President Mayberry. So this is the closure of Pine and the reimagination of that zone, which affects District A, District, District D. And then we have, um, you know, rebuilding on the site of Echo Loader, which also contemplates Corbett. Uh, we have the expansion of Bernice Matthews. These are all District D schools. And I am telling you, I am hearing from this now. And you will hear about this too, when this is your area. And this is a good thing because families are excited. But they want to know, they already know we're doing these projects. It's in the FMP. Um, mind you, there's obviously movement that happens with the projects because we haven't broken ground or gone into design with some of these. But these families already know that this is coming and they largely want to know earlier in the process where they're going to go to school. And so I just, this is not just a District D issue, but I do want to point out that these are family members and staff members that I'm hearing from. And at least those projects that I've mentioned are all within that area. Do Westlake and then Trustee Hall?
Thank you, President Smith. It was something that, um, Trustee Hall said, and I don't know if this is possible because I have never served on the zoning committee. But when you said, um, the design, maybe we shouldn't be looking at this in the space of time, like one year, two year, two and a half years, two and three-quarter years. Maybe we should be looking at it in the space of the activity. And when we're doing the action or activity of design, maybe that's what we should be saying so that we're not locking ourselves into a specific timeframe. But when we're in the stage, the space of design, that's when the zoning happens. I mean, does that make sense? Because the two, it sounds like the two coincide. And I think people, they're getting excited because they're going to see, uh, the design and what the school's going to look like. And then we could be talking about some ideas. Doesn't have to be carved exactly in stone, but we could be then letting them know that the capacity of the school is this. And so this option is to incorporate these schools. And then just like at all the FMP meetings that I've gone to, then people are having discussion about it. And then we can hear from them when they see the school. We can hear from them about how they feel about the zoning opportunities. I mean, I'm just.
I, I actually have a question for Superintendent Ernst. So, um, my, my thought is, and, and this is, this is my teacher brain working. If teachers knew further in advance what that could look like, this is just me contemplating it, and I'd love your thoughts. Would, maybe we, if they knew further in advance what the process was going to be and where the school was going to be going, perhaps maybe there wouldn't be so many of those year-before openings because we, we've started that process earlier and they felt a part of it and felt a part of that community. And I'm just, just contemplating that, again, similar to the families feeling like they could be a part of it, perhaps if we also included the staff at the, the two schools coming together rather than just, for example, the students at Echo Loader getting to vote on something that the staff at both schools or all three schools or however many are going to be consolidated? Because there's a couple options in the FMP where we've got potentially three schools. So, um, that's just a, a thought. And I'd love, I'd love your thoughts on that. And then I have one more thought on, um, what Trustee Westlake just said.
Okay, I'm going to go to, um, Trustee Nicolette. We need to start moving towards action. I am so sorry. She asked you a question. I apologize for cutting you off. And then at, at some point, we're going to need to.
I'll be very quick.
Before you go, um, I, I cut off Superintendent Ernst. So I apologize for that.
Thanks for the question, Hall. I, I understand that perspective as the possibilities of, of that might alleviate. You know, again, I think we're in speculative space. And I think, I'll, you know, I, I can't help but resist, um, there's a book, uh, called, uh, Distinguishing the Signals From the Noise by Nate Silver. And it talks about what Mr. Circe talked about here. That forecasting is more accurate the more closely you get to the date. And that is unequivocal. And so that's what we're trying to do. And to the point of, could that alleviate? It, it might. But I will tell you that when we're not only consolidating school communities, we're start consolidating school staffs, we have worked to try to proactively develop guidance in this area. However, depending on where this goes, we may have to revisit that as well. And so, again, I think there's just a lot of dimension to it. And, and I, I bring that up because I, I think all of this has, has a great deal of speculation. And I appreciate things being lived right now and drawing upon the experience of now rather than later. So, you know, I, I get the multiple perspectives. I don't think there's going to be an exact right answer. But I can tell you as a leaning that, that policies that offer flexibilities, there can be value in that. And as we work to get more specific in policy, that, um, that may reduce some of those flexibilities and abilities to maneuver in ways that we want or maybe aren't actually seeing right now around the next corner. So again, I'm, I'm speaking in very high levels just to try to capture what has been talked about this evening in response to your, your question, Trustee Hall, and in response to the decision that you're all about to make. And I know that you're actively deliberating on right now.
I, I, that is extremely insightful because you have your pulse on, on many departments in the school district that have, that have concern and, and, and I will even say sometimes frustration and excitement and skin in the game. And that's extremely valuable. I, I want to say to my, my colleague, Trustee Westlake, I think your idea is absolutely beautiful. I really do. I, I like how you think. I don't, I don't believe it would, it would help alleviate the questions. The, the question, people want to know. And I will just tell you that I, I am leaning toward keeping the policy as is. It continues to give stability. If we can do it in two years, bravo. If we can, if it's going to be nine months because things got waylaid, you know, flexibility, situations, life interruptus. I think our, our policy, the way it is, um, lends itself to that flexibility. And COO Circe has heard our desires. And I think they're extremely valid because we care about our communities, as does everyone who works with Washoe County School District. So right now, we're, we're kind of flexible and not putting a timeline on it might be better.
Okay, with that, being a fresh perspective, totally brand-new guy who just not involved in any of these other things that go on, just your detailed brief alone convinced me that, you know, you're using forecasting, using facts, using past practices, community engagement. You're hearing from the voices and things like that. Also, Joe, where you came with the, the past practice about, you know, to make the best call. When is the best call? When is the sweet spot? There really isn't one. But we know for a fact right now though, that that one year is a pretty, uh, uh, pretty good, uh, gauge of when to and when not to. But if we could adjust that, that would be great. But again, using the facts and listen to what you had said to me, sir, I really, uh, to, take heed to that. I, I think that that's the best approach. I am in favor of just keeping it as the one year. Because I know you're going to want to know. All families want to know. They do want to know ahead of time. But if we make that move and we make that bad move, then it looks bad upon the school district and the staff. So I think it would be good to stick kind of what's been working. And that's just my take on it.
Okay, just a couple of thoughts and, and just to wrap this up since I'm the one that brought this. So, um, I think, to me, it's, it seems like we, we are all kind of on the, the idea So, um, I think, to me, it's, it seems like we, we are all kind of on the, the idea that during the design phase, that the conversations need to start, is not during the construction phase, but during the design phase. It seems to me that everyone is kind of on board with that. Um, but that we wanna get as close to accurate as possible, so we don't wanna be, you know, asking Adams team 36 months out to opening, to be making an actual zoning decision, but perhaps aligning the design phase so that the moment that we, we approve that here, that perhaps that's a signal. And it's not currently in policy. There is no policy. It's just a practice that we've used because that has been the most successful, also because, you know, we started building right away. Like, we passed it and we were like, let's go, right? So it just kind of worked. So there's that. So I, I think in, in pulling all those pieces together, I would like to motion that the, the, the approval of the design signals to the superintendent to work with staff, and this is probably not an appropriate motion, so, yeah.
You're exceeding that. The only you can make is a motion to, uh, ask that staff come back with a change to board policy.
Okay.
Whatever number it is. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. That's why I wanted to ask, so...
Well, I don't mean to interrupt. How could that be the only thing that we do if the recommended motion is to affirm the historic practice? So is that, I just wanna make sure that I understand.
Yeah.
And maybe this is just me being a little confused because the recommended motion was to approve the practice.
Well, I guess the inference is if you don't change anything, you're approving the current practice. So if the board, so if you make a motion that says, I wanna amend, um, uh, the 7105 pursuant to 9070, and the board says no, then that's affirming the current practice. So I'll, so amended motion technically is probably not accurate either, but it doesn't...
Yeah.
But let's be clear. Recommended motions are not part of open meeting law, so it doesn't matter. That's irrelevant to this.
Okay. Okay, she has another thought. Sorry.
So, sorry. I know everyone's getting tired. I'm kind of getting a little punch drunk myself, but may, maybe I'm just not, my brain's not functioning right. But how can you invite families to FMP meetings to talk about and discuss and get excited about the design, and this is gonna be here, and this group room's gonna be here, and, you know, yada, yada, yada? And you're not even thinking about who you're inviting? I mean, so you're, you're having these exciting meetings about design, but if you don't kind of at least attempt an approach on who's gonna be going to that school, you're not gonna be inviting all the players. Is, is that coming across? So like, there's Alex, me, and Christine, okay? And we all go to three, our families and kids go to three different schools, and now you're starting the design of the Pine campus, but, and everyone's supposed to be getting excited and going and discussing. Who, who are you gonna invite? Are you just gonna invite Alex? Are you just gonna invite me? Are you just gonna invite Christine? But if you don't start having that conversation of who's in the zoning for the Pine campus, you might not invite Alex, and then all those families end up going, and they were left out of the design and the FMP meetings. Is that, am I not right on that? I mean...
Well, that's the discussion.
Yeah, that is what we're saying.
And that's important. We can't leave people out.
Yeah. So, uh, Neil, I have a question. So because it's not actually in the policy, there isn't a date in the policy. So, so what, what would the, what would the motion look like? Because even, even the motion that's on here is saying that we're affirming a policy that's not actually in existence. So I, I'm...
It doesn't say it's affirming policy. It says it's affirming a practice.
The practice. So would we be asking, the motion would be asking for a change in the practice? Or is that, that's not a thing?
No, the motion on the, the agenda item is a, if the board wants to direct staff, it has to do so through the board policy.
So then we're asking for a board policy change?
Right.
Okay.
And so under Board Policy 9070, since this is coming via the Board of Trustees, the board first, because we put this in there on purpose, is you have to gauge the board.
To see if they even wanna change. So that's like our first agenda item, so, okay, okay.
Yep. So really, the only per...
Somebody has to make the motion.
That's right.
Okay, so that would be more similar, that is not proper English, I apologize. So that would be similar to the 3.02.
It's the exact same thing as 3.02. Uh, is it 3.02 or 3.01?
Because we, we moved to amend...
Can we do it friendly?
Yeah, it would be the exact...
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I'm still trying to figure this out.
The exact same thing is 3.02.
Except I'm saying, we're saying 9070, or no, no, we're doing 9055.
No, you were, you wanna change 7105 if I believe it's...
But you don't wanna do the motion, because you don't want the year. So if you do the motion, you have to...
No, wait, I'm confused. We have to, we have to agree that we even want to make, to change a policy before we even make a motion to change a policy.
That's right.
Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So then the motion would be the same exact one as in 3.02, if, if I'm asking for everybody to see if they even want to change the policy.
Yep.
Am I on right track?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, just wanted to make sure. Okay. I would like to move that the Board of Trustees approve amending Board Policy, discussing, discussing amending, because that's right, we had to change that. Thank you. Discussing, amending Board Policy 9070. Did I, no, 9055.
105.
7105. Sorry, there's way, there's a lot listed here. 7105. Let me rephrase that. I move that the Board of Trustees discuss the possible amendment of Board Policy 7105. Did I get that right? Look at me.
I second.
Okay. And if this is correct, then the superintendent would come back based on this discussion and then formalize some options for the board to actually discuss with that, and that would come forward at a future meeting. Because we're not making those decisions right now. We're just continuing the discussion based on the rich dialogue that we've had and the recognition that the one year isn't even in the policy right now. So we're talking about a practice, and I've gotta be honest, team, that is introducing confusion for me. So I appreciate where we're at right now. Baby step, level one. Thank you. Um, all right, so I have a motion by Trustee Hall. I have a second by Trustee Westlake. I see no lights on for discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Um, I believe that's five to two, or I did not hear a third vote.
I'm sorry, that was a nay.
Okay, thank you very much. So that's a vote of four to three, and so that passes. So thank you so much, colleagues. This is great work, by the way. This is important work for us to have these discussions, and I appreciate the opportunity to have these conversations.
Madam President, point of clarification, um, just, and I know we've had a lot of confusion here, but this is so that we bring the item back to discuss actual...
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep. We actually have not entirely decided anything besides the fact that we wanna bring it back. So we're not actually directing staff to do anything besides to maybe look at some of these practices and then come with another time, but we have not committed ourselves to any endpoint decision. Okay?
Well, that's not totally accurate. We have to come back with some type of proposed language, so we are doing something. We have to go and try to cobble this discussion together.
...all of our ideas.
So that would be what we have to do, and then like our traditional pattern, we will come back with language that we think meets this, and then you'll change it as you see fit.
Okay. All right, thank you so much, colleagues. That closes item 3.06 and Section 3 in its entirety, and brings us now to Section 4, our reports. So Annie, can you open us up with item 4.01, our Student Representatives Report?
Yes, I would love to. Um, to start off, a lot of you are obviously aware of our conference, but for those of you that didn't go or went and weren't sure why you went, um, I just wanna kind of talk about why we have the conference. Um, the point of this conference is to empower the students that aren't already involved in our district student voice or in their school student voice council to get involved and to go use their voice and create that council and make it official. Um, for the schools that don't have official councils, this is a good way for them to recruit people and say, hey, like, you're a part of this, like, we really wanna start to start our school. And for those that already have established councils, this is a good way to use that and make it more legitimate, because I think a big thing that we're striving for is legitimacy in the council. It's not a club, it's a council. Um, and so I think this was a really good way to empower those students at the middle school and high school level. Um, and just to hear representation from around the district of why we need to do this and to hear from the district student voice at the school level of like what we're doing for them and what, and how they're powering us to keep doing stuff at the district level. Um, and so it's a really good way to share, it's a good platform for continuing student voice and getting everyone involved. Um, so that's kind of why we have the conference, but it was a lot of fun and we got a lot of good feedback, um, and it's a really great way to share what we're doing, because it's very leadership and we have leadership conferences, so why not do student voice conferences? Um, also, I'm very proud to update you guys on the bill and on Nevada Association of Student Trustees, NAST. Um, the bill is officially AB 316, and, um, it will be, I think there's a meeting about it, and I will be out of town for when they have the meeting about it. But, um, me and Michael Keys, my, uh, colleague in this, we are heading this and we are asking for, like, donations and stuff, for getting connectivity throughout Nevada and all of those things. Um, our mailing list is growing and we have a lot of community involvement. Um, I got to speak with the two really amazing people at Nevada Center for Future Learners. They helped with the Student Portrait and, um, a lot of things like that that you guys have worked with. And so it's really exciting seeing that a lot of people care about this and are hoping that it succeeds. Um, AB 316 is also about getting, as Trustee Mayberry mentioned, getting student trustees on every board in Nevada, um, for probably the 26, 27 school year. And, I mean, even if this doesn't make it to legislation or it doesn't pass, we still have a lot of faith that we can get a lot of students on these boards, whether the bill passes or not. Um, and we know it's unique for everyone, but that's kind of why we're making this is because we want that uniqueness to be, um, something that is highlighted, because Nevada is very different with all the different counties we have. So we wanna make sure everyone is heard in their own unique way, but we also want to make the turnover a lot faster and empower those students to give them a voice because, you know, if we have the superintendent appoint a student and then they're speaking on what the superintendent wants them to say, that's not quite the goal, so we're trying to make it uniform across Nevada. Um, and so we've had a lot of great support and it is moving along very well. So I'm really excited about that, and those are my big things for now.
Thanks, Annie. All right, we'll move on now to item 4.2, our Board Reports. Dr. Nicolet, will you kick us off?
I would be happy to. Thank you. Trustee Westlake and I had the opportunity to attend the Honors Band at the Pioneer. Very simply, it was fabulous. It was a full house. There were 15 schools, 150 student musicians. It was really fun. It was wonderful. I, I attended Reading Week. I went to both Verdi Elementary and Stedt Elementary. You know, it gives me a new admiration for teachers going all day long, and I am serious, because I read for many classrooms and I had a ball, and I was really glad to go home and put my feet up. So thank you, teachers and librarians. Um, let me see here, March 5th, NASB, and I was so honored to have all seven of Washoe County School District Trustees attend Day at the Legislature. We rocked it, you guys. That, that was, that was amazing. Little, I will say, it was a little easier for us to go to Carson than people from Elko, just gotta point that out. We're very fortunate that way. We met a lot of senators and assembly members, and it was a wonderful learning experience for them as well as for us. And I sat in, as all of us did, um, and former trustee, current Chair Senator Angie Taylor led the Education Committee. That was wonderful. I visited Cold Springs Elementary School, and I met Rocky, a veteran, naval veteran who is a volunteer at the school. The kids just adore him. He's got a soft heart, but he's got a military firmness and, you know, you, we can get you through this kind of attitude, and he's absolutely delightful. Inskie Elementary School, um, she taught me all about something I really didn't know about, and that's the opportunities for homeschool children to be able to come into schools, you know, you have to arrange it, you can't just pop in, but they can go into lunchtimes, they can go into recesses. It's an opportunity for, for kiddos that are homeschooled that need a little more social engagement. I did not know that we were doing that. What a wonderful, wonderful thing. And now to Nancy Gomes. Um, they had a party on Friday. It was their Friday party. Karen, the librarian, got all the lights going, and the kids had all those colorful things around their necks, you know? You break them and they, they illuminate, and it was absolutely wonderful, and I guess I better stop. Oh, FBLA and, um, JPA, JROTC accreditation at Reno High. Bye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I, yeah, so I, I did attend the Loader Reconstruction Meeting. I also had a chance to visit the Cold Springs Early Childhood Center with my, my buddy, uh, Trustee Woodley. Appreciate seeing all of you at the Nevada Association of School Boards in Carson City, and I wanna give a shout out to Pinion for scheduling out appointments with our legislators. Those were, were very productive. Um, I wanna give a shout out to Superintendent Ernst for, for your work this week down, down in Carson as well. Had a wonderful time touring our book repository with, uh, Trustee Smith. I was a guest reader, President Smith, pardon me. Uh, I was a guest reader at Sun Valley Elementary, Glen Duncan Elementary, and, uh, we honored Principal Colleen Winters, Winter. Earlier today, she has been in education for more than 40 years. I think she spent a couple of years at, at another district, and I did the math, I was actually 13 years old when she started her education career. But I wanna give her a shout out to her dedic, for, for her dedication to her amazing kids. But I had a chance to participate in, uh, the tour, Alex Maxwell, one of those rare, really unique experiences where I got to read to the kids, got to participate in lunch duties, talked to several teachers. And then I made the Maxwell Matters Newsletter. This, this goes to, um, this goes throughout the galaxy. Uh, I wanted, it's just the next slide, you can see it says, Best Trustee in the Universe. So I, I, I just, I just have to say, folks, you know, if you can, if you can beat that...
The truth is the truth.
You know?
All right.
So anyways, it was a lot of fun. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, now I just feel like we're done.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, yeah, the past week or two, I had the privilege of visiting with Ms. Novelli at Lemelson STEM Academy. Um, I got to see, um, a lot more classrooms than I normally do when I do a school visit, so it was very, um, interesting, and she's doing some wonderful things over there with her kids and with her staff, and, uh, she's showing some, um, strong leadership. Um, we had some conversations, appreciate the changes that she's making in her school that she feels in need. Uh, I did wanna give a shout out to her, um, Partner in Education, which is the Associated General Contractors. Uh, they've been helping the school do some projects, um, so I really wanna express my gratitude to them, because they've been a really good partner in education for, uh, Lemelson STEM Academy. I also had the opportunity to, um, go down to the legislature. I appreciate that. I, I appreciate Pinion helping us to be able to go in and advocate for our district. Each and every one of us had the ability, the opportunity to go and meet with assembly men and women and senators and, um, and share with them our concerns and what's important to us as a district. Uh, so that was really productive. That was really good. I did hear a lot of positive, um, feedback from both senators and assembly, um, persons
Assembly persons about our Superintendent and his presentation. That was really good to hear. They were impressed. So I like that we're representing well. So thank you for that. I also had the opportunity to speak, be a guest speaker at the Glenn Duncan Elementary School. I also visited the Early Childhood Center with Trustee Mayberry. And then also, aside from, let me see what else. Oh, yes, previous weekend, I did participate in the annual Nevada Military Support Alliance Gala where we do a fundraiser for supporting Gold Star families, which are Nevada State families that made the ultimate sacrifice in the field of battle for our country. And we had over seven hundred participants. So that was wonderful. I spent three days over there getting everything ready and packed, and we had a speaker from Washington DC, a general, and that was marvelous. But it was really good. It's always really good to see how many people in our community come out and show out and represent and support our veterans. Thank you.
Wonderful things these last couple of weeks. So I did attend the Honor Band performances at the Pioneer with Trustee Nicolette. They were all amazing. I mean, the advanced middle school just blew my mind. I was invited by Pastor Emilio, who is working hard developing a ministry for middle schoolers and high school youth. It's called The Young Life. They've been around for eighty-four years. They meet kids where they are, literally and figuratively, joined by Paul Anderson and Donald Abbott, are some of our Sparks Assemblymen, and Mary Lou Garcia, one of our commissioners. It's a wonderful program. Went to Men Di Family Night, went to Bees for Books, attended with President Smith, where Rotarians are trying, are fighting to wipe out illiteracy and get books in the hands of our kiddos. And one thing that was said, I mean, this to me, kids that have the opportunity being read to when they're young hear on average a million more words than kids that aren't read to. Attended communities and school simulation and cried pretty much the whole time, living the life of a middle schooler and the hardships that he goes through. It was a simulation, but it felt very real to me. Ended up at Desert Skies with Mr. G, and then I started laughing and having fun, but I cried during the simulation. Shout out to Principal Jason Chipman, Florence Drake Elementary School. He was honored by Senator Catherine Cortez Mastro. He has the best Title One school, not in Washoe County School District, but in Nevada. I went to the Joy Prom at the Discovery Museum, and I have to say, it was magical, absolutely magical. However, I'd be dancing with some of the, some of the prom attendees, and then I would look around and they would have just abandoned me out on the floor. I guess they didn't want to dance with an old fuddy duddy. Reading, Reading Week, read to kinders, first and third, Lois Allen, Esther Bennett, Virginia Palmer, Sepulveda, Sun Valley Elementary, and Catherine Dunn. Attended the talent show at Jerry Whitehead Elementary School. These kids are amazing. Day at the Legislature, representing Washoe County School District and NASB, attended with other wonderful trustees, spoke with numerous Assemblymen, and promoted Washoe County School District what we're doing and our needs. Training at NASB, for NASB in Carson City with Trustee Phoenix. It was wonderful. We were learning about budget and bargaining, which I don't know if you could ever get enough information on that. Am I over?
Beep beep. No, we're going the other direction.
And student voice.
There we go.
I didn't hear any beeping. Don't tell me.
All right. Okay, very quickly, I spent most of last week at the Legislature. I got to see President Smith speak for two bills and our Superintendent share all of the amazing things that our district is doing and where we're going and really continue to advocate for, you know, the funding from last time to continue for our, our school. And then the NASB Day. We all, a lot of us got to attend the Millican Award, which was so incredible, such a great celebration. And then we also, so I was very honored to speak at the opening of the Social Studies Conference this last Saturday at Team CC and got to see two of our Huntsburger fourth graders present to teachers. Student voice. It was absolutely the coolest thing. So how awesome are they? And that is Erin Grossman, their teacher. And then this morning, we all, not all of us, but quite a few of us got to attend the opening of the Student Voice Conference. Annie, fantastic job you and your team did. Amazing at that. Thank you.
Look at that.
I had some of hers.
All right. So just getting it started here, one of my school visits was at Bowhatch Elementary. I met with Principal Heidi Rollis and AP Bryn Hall. They have about seven hundred students. And last year, they worked on growth and achievement, increased their Nevada School Performance Framework scores from up three points for an index of eighty-two point five. So they're really doing a good job over there. The one thing that was unique that you see here in the video, or in the video, in the picture there, is they have the windows that are open so they can do passive supervision as they're walking up and down, seeing everything going there. And wait for that one there. So the one thing I wanted to say about that was they have a passion project. So what that means is they're trying to find something that the students are passionate about to bring to school just for them because, you know, they get really busy with all kinds of stuff in their everyday lives. Also talked about gamification with iReady. So they're looking at trying to balance that. It came from their Student Voice Council. So that was good to hear. And then they, again, some of the passive supervision there. I also attended the Millican Award, and she had no idea what was going on at all. I mean, I was watching her the whole time there, and she was like, what? So that was good. And then I visited North Valleys. And here I met with Principal Thomas Macaluso. He's very proud of his school. And here's a few photos there. The one thing that I liked that he brought up is that they do a parade in the school, you know, so they recognize everyone there. He's working very hard at trying to change the image of the campus. He's the guy that wants to be at that school. He says, I want to be there. That's me. This is my school. I'll take it on. And so I looked at him and I said, you know, you're the right man for the job. So that was awesome there. And then we have, I went to NASB. We did talk about the employee relations from Emily Ellison. I think she was a former employee here. So she did a very good job. And then NRS two-eight-eight Bargaining, which was so fun to listen to, but it was very informative. And then Financial Leadership for Trustees. So it was a very good walk away for a new guy showing up. And then lastly, I attended the Fourth Annual Bowhatch Day. Here are some photos. And the students, the school waits for the day when the students who attends becomes a law enforcement officer. They're looking at that. They're waiting for the day that somebody from this system here decides to be the police. And so I thought that was pretty amazing how the community is dedicated to John and the family. So I thought it was amazing. Just a couple of photos here for the last thirty seconds. This is from the garden at Panther Valley. You know, they work hard at their programs to keep students engaged. Next slide there. Actually, the metal shop did that there. So they filled up some space. You know, they did a lot of good things. So in the IT section, they're actually working on servers and doing all kinds of stuff. So I thought it was very amazing to hear from the principal that they're doing their best to keep students engaged. So that's it.
Another read higherader, by the way.
Read higherader. There you go.
All right. I'll wait for JJ to get, okay, you got the first one ready. Okay, so the theme is reading this week. So first picture, I donated books to spread the word Nevada, which any resident can do. They have an office on Gentry Way. You can drop off books in this nice little receptacle they have out front, and they'll rehome to families. My second picture, I did a ride along with the Washoe County School District Police Department with Sergeant Cardinal. It was such a cool day. I highly recommend any of our trustees to do that as well. Got to see a lot of really important work and get to really understand the work that our school police are doing. I also participated, I attended the Gallagher Dialogues from the Kenny Gwynne Center for Policy Priorities around Effective Policy and Lawmaking. I also participated and attended the Rotary fundraiser with Trustee Westlake, raising money for books. And so thank you so much to the Rotarians for that. At the Legislature, before you see this picture here, but earlier than that, a day before, cheered on Superintendent Ernst in his presentation to the Assembly Education Committee with Fantastic on and heard about that. The picture that you see here is the work of our board at the Legislature for the NASB Day. Were trustees across the state were there at the Legislature. The fourth picture is they're cheering on Ally Galas from Jesse Beck. She's the fourth grade teacher who won the Millican Award and the twenty-five thousand dollars. And I got to tell you, it is a lot of fun to watch someone's eyes in real time. They have just won twenty-five thousand dollars. If you were ever like me, a kid in the eighties, and you saw those commercials for the clearinghouse, Publishers Clearinghouse, this was so much like this. It was amazing. She's an incredible teacher, and I am so proud to have more and more of our educators win the Oscars of Education with the Millican Awards. The fifth picture is a visit to the Book Distribution Center, which was absolutely fantastic. That was with Trustee Nicolette and Vice President Mayberry. And we had a really, really good time seeing where the books live. It was so great. We had like a serious amount of fun for being in a warehouse with books. We had a really good time. And then participated in several International Women's Day events this past March eighth. Cue again to Nevada Women's Fund for being here today and for putting that on. And then lastly, spoke this morning at the Student Voice Conference. So good stuff. Thank you. All right, that closes item four point zero two, and now we move on to four point zero three, our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all, trustees. Appreciate all the nice updates. Great to see such wonderful engagement with our schools and appreciate all that you're doing. I'll just offer a couple of brief comments. First, on Student Voice, Annie, appreciate the leadership that you have in this position. You're doing a great job. And on National Women's Month recognition, we want to make sure we recognize you for your leadership. You're doing a great job and keep up the amazing work. I'll take that to our trustees as well, President Smith, Dr. Nicolette, Trustee Westlake, and Trustee Hall. Thank you for your leadership. It's important and appreciate the recognitions that we, today. It really is an honor to present the great work that Washoe County School District is doing. And so when I get a chance to speak down in Carson City, it's really on behalf of our school district. It's on behalf of all of us. It's on behalf of the work we're doing together to, to create great things for, for our students. Then I will say as well, on the National Women's Month recognition, I, we've got some great leaders in the audience. I do want to recognize one who had just a lovely news story. If you didn't have a chance to see that, it was in Superintendent's Highlights, Deputy Superintendent McMaster. Really feel privileged and honored to work alongside her. She's doing a marvelous job. So if you haven't had a chance to see that, it's great. And thank you, Tiffany, for, for what you're doing. And Michelle and Tammy, I would be remiss if I didn't also say thank you to each of you as well. Officer Bowhatch Day is really special. The way that the school, you know, honors the legacy of Officer Bowhatch, and the kids recognize that legacy to what Trustee Phoenix said, with that desire to have a police officer come from there. We heard that one of the, one of the parents of one of the students was able to, and now we're waiting for one of those, those students to do so. So, you know, really, there's so many great things happening in Washoe County School District. There's so much to be proud of, from our, our teacher recognitions, our school recognitions, to the work that's occurring. And so I think it's just important to, to always remember that, that there are so many good things, and that's a testimony to extremely hard work and great leadership that's occurring amongst all. So I'll close with that, and thanks to all.
Thank you, Superintendent Ernst. That closes Section Four in its entirety, and we move on now to Section Five, our closing items. JJ, do we have any closing public comment? Hello, we're closing item five point zero one, and moving on now to five point zero two, our next meeting announcement. That is April eighth. So just want to take a moment of emphasis, there is not a second meeting this month due to spring break. So the next meeting we're having again is April eighth, two thousand twenty-five. And that brings me now to six oh nine PM at Jornment.